Mayor Meyer.
Here.
Vice Mayor Clark.
Yeah.
Commissioner Brunner.
Here.
Commissioner Matheson.
Here.
Commissioner McDonald.
Here.
You can hear it.
Please stand and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Are there any comments by my colleagues on the board here for this special meeting?
No, sir.
Seeing none. Mr. Manager, any comments?
No, sir.
I'll seek an approval of the agenda if there is a motion for that.
Move approval of the agenda of eight seventeen twenty, oh, of the agenda, sorry.
Second. I have a motion for approval of the agenda by Vice Mayor Clark and a second by Commissioner McDonald. Any public comment? Seeing none. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries unanimously. Do we have any general public comment for this meeting before we dive in? Anybody making public comment online via Zoom, please raise your hand. Seeing none. Okay, before we move on to the consent calendar, item number one, I will turn it over to our city manager for a brief statement.
You can, you can do the consent calendar. My, my statement's with agenda item two, I'm sorry.
For item number two?
Yes.
Okay, do I have a motion for?
Move approval of the eight seventeen twenty twenty budget workshop minutes.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion by Vice Mayor Clark and a second by Commissioner Matheson for approval of the budget workshop minutes. Any public comment on our minutes? Any online? Seeing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Okay, moving on to item number two. Now I'll pass it over to our city manager.
Yes, sir, thank you. This will be the tentative millage for fiscal year 2021. By Florida law, two public hearings must be held to ultimately adopt the final millage rates and annual budget for the city of Stewart, Florida. The purpose of tonight's first public hearing, or tentative, is to hear public comments regarding the proposed millage rates and budget, amend the budget if necessary, and to tentatively adopt the millage rate and city budget for fiscal year 2021. The first public hearing has been advertised via the notice of proposed property taxes mailed to the, mailed by the property appraiser's office. If there are any questions from the commissioners about the budget, we'll be happy to entertain them. There was three budget workshops process. The final workshop process did have the entirety of the budget inclusive, and then subsequently I have sent you all the complete budget that has all the pretty charts and all of the narratives. For the tentative millage, the city of Stewart, Florida rollback rate for fiscal year 2021 is 4.7983 mils. The city is proposing a millage rate for the fiscal year 2021 which exceeds the rollback rate by 4.2%. The city is proposing a millage rate of 5.00 mils, which is what it currently is for fiscal year 20. The proposed, the purpose for the increase is to fund current operations and accommodate normal increases in the cost of those operations. Mr. Mortel will read the resolution title.
Thank you, Mr. Mortel. I'm sorry?
Second, Mr. Mortel.
Resolution number 112-2020, a resolution of the City Commission of the City of Stewart, Florida, adopting the tentative millage rate for fiscal year 2021, providing an effective date and for other purposes.
Thank you, Mr. Mortel.
Looking for a motion.
We looking for a motion or entertain a motion or discussion.
Do I have a motion? Do I have any discussion?
I make a motion. I'll second the motion.
I have a motion by Commissioner Brunner and a second by Vice Mayor Clark.
And for the record, would that motion be to approve Resolution 112-2020?
Yes.
Yes.
Motion approved.
Motion for approval. Commissioner Matheson?
I would, I was gonna make the motion, but I'll second it.
Okay. Beg your pardon, I thought you had a comment.
No comment.
Any further discussion on the board before we call?
That's for 5.0 mils for fiscal year 2021?
That's correct, I believe.
Yes, ma'am.
Your second. Any public comment? Any online? Please raise your hand. Seeing none. Ms. Latour, will you call the roll, please?
Commissioner McDonald?
Yes.
Commissioner Matheson?
Yes.
Commissioner Brunner?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Clark?
Yes.
Mayor Meyer?
Yes. Thank you. Motion carries unanimously. Next, item number three, the fire service non-ad valorem assessment. Mr. Mortel?
This is resolution number 113-2020, a resolution of the City's, Commission of the City of Stewart, Florida approving the fiscal year 2020 to 2021 non-ad valorem assessment role for fire protection services, facilities and programs, directing certification of the assessment role to the Martin County tax collector and providing an effective date.
Thank you, Mr. Mortel. Any discussion? Is there a motion for approval?
Motion for approval.
I have a motion by Commissioner Brunner. Is there a second?
Second.
I have a second by Commissioner Matheson. Any questions or further discussion on the board? Seeing none. Is there any public comment for fire assessment? Any online? Seeing none.
Can I ask the city manager?
Yes.
If we received any, any comments from anyone online regarding for our assessment?
No, ma'am.
No mess, no letters to the city?
Not that I've received. The finance director hasn't received any either.
Okay, thank you.
And the assessment hasn't changed.
Okay, Ms. Latour, will you call the roll, please?
Vice Mayor Clark?
Yes.
Commissioner Brunner?
Yes.
Commissioner Matheson?
Yes.
Commissioner McDonald?
Yes.
Mayor Meyer?
Yes. Motion carries unanimously. Item number four, the tentative budget for fiscal year 2021. Mr. Mortel?
This is resolution number 114-2020, a resolution of the City Commission of the City of Stewart, Florida, adopting the tentative budgets of the city of Stewart, Florida for fiscal year beginning October 1, 2020 and ending September 30, 2021, providing an effective date and for other purposes.
Thank you, Mr. Mortel. Any discussion on the board? I know we had our budget workshops.
I have a comment to make on this one and a request.
Yes, sir. Yes, Commissioner?
Mr. Mayor, the, the, the city attorney has a budget of, budgeted $50,000 for outside counsel, counsel in case it's necessary for fiscal year 2021. The past two fiscal years, that amount hasn't been used in its entirety. And I'd like moving forward into fiscal year 2022 to appropriate any remaining funds once fiscal year 2021 ends to be put aside into a separate trust, so to say, for environmental protection. So it wouldn't necessarily affect this upcoming year's budget, but I think this would be an appropriate time to bring it up. Should those funds be necessary to be used for fiscal year, they're budgeted there. But should we be so lucky to not need those funds, I'd like to appropriate them in 2022 for an environmental protection trust.
Yes.
That would be something I think that we'd need to do in 2022. You know, I don't think that we can bind the commission on a budget for next year's budget. Fortunately, like you said, we haven't used that $50,000, and if we need it, we can always do a budget amendment.
This is not necessarily a motion, so to say, but I wanted to bring it up. I think this is the appropriate time since we're discussing the budget.
Yeah, I think next year during the budget process, then that would be the time to look and see how much is there and then, and then do, just create an appropriation for it next year.
Well, I don't want these.
And I think that would, not opposing it, I'm just saying that procedurally, I think that would be the way to do that.
Yes, Commissioner, I, I like the idea. I think that's a good idea. And I'm, I'm in favor of us working that out more. I'd like to be able to have staff jolly perhaps work out an accounting plan for that so we can create a, an actual item so that we can track it and properly vest it and, and work around it, but maybe as Commissioner McDonald said, any unused funds for that could be, we could have a budget amendment this fiscal year and then leading up to 2022 budget workshop process, we could create an accounting for that. Discuss creating an accounting for that.
I think that would be the best alternative rather than saying we're gonna pinpoint Mr. Mortel's outside council money to roll over to an after-the-fact sinking fund because basically until the caffers done, we don't even know what's available. I mean, we could come in shortfall revenues and that money gets swiped and has to go to pay bills. So if you're looking at a, some type of a reserve or restricted fund, that should be done probably at the beginning of the budget process for the following fiscal year and follow-up, similar to what we did with the CIP sinking fund. And then have that going forward rather than looking at an after-the-budget leftover.
So is your recommendation then, city manager, if we were trying to do this for the, any residual funds that were not spent, unexpended appropriations in this budget cycle for '21, that we should probably try to create that appropriation item in this budget rather than doing a?
Well, it's a little late now, but.
Well, it's not late. We are here meeting to talk about it. What do you, I mean?
Point is looking, moving forward, thinking about this, I mean, if the funds aren't used to, to keep them, you know, almost under the, the allocation of the city attorney's department, so to say, for an environmental protection fund.
So you're?
Redistributing back into the general fund.
So I, I.
I don't wanna earmark them, I mean, right now, they're budgeted for outside council. Should that be necessary? You know, we don't, we can't predict the future of this upcoming fiscal year, but, but the past two years, basically, they've gone from there unused into the general fund and then reallocated back each time.
Back into fund balance. Well, yeah, I, I, overall, I, I'm interested in having staff bring us some more information
You know, if it's a better recommendation from staff over this coming fiscal year, we can.
Mr. Vaglioli?
Fund. Well, I, you know, I, I worked for the manager and I got the nod, so. Yeah, the, the issue is, I believe, what the manager's referring to, so I had mentioned that per the annual audit that we are required to perform last year, you know, we, we basically only put $300,000 to the good at the end, so we really need to wait and see. There is a listing of reserves here in the budget that we do, and we identify the manager's capital improvement fund, and those are various reserves that we maintain on the general fund side. And it's in the PDF document page bookmarked for you to jump, jump to quickly. And so what we would begin to do is list that reserve and it would be our, our intention to fund it, but again, we would be, we'd be answerable to what the actual financials come out to be. Even though the revenues for 2021 came in surprisingly, you know, higher than what we thought, given the COVID-19 situation, we still haven't seen the effect of this year. So, you know, I'll get, as part of the audit, we'll find out how '20 did and then '21, so it, it would be your intention to fund that reserve, but that would always come down as a budgetary item that the manager would bring forward, just like we do now with the health insurance reserve and the capital improvements. It's, you know, he would propose what we think we can fund it at, and that would meet our available revenue resources.
Thank you, Mr. Vaglioli. Yes, Commissioner?
I just wanted to say, didn't we go through this at the last minute? Was it last year or the year before for environmental $100,000? Did we go through that?
I believe, Commissioner, what you're referring to is Mr. Peters' very generous offer to give you excess funds in the stormwater fund. However, you know, I don't have the nickname of gloom for nothing. Stormwater fund actually didn't make as much money as they were supposed to that year. So that $100,000 fund was not actually there in stormwater. That was only a budgeted windfall that we didn't actually realize, hence this year why Mr. Peters and, and the Public Works team proposed the stormwater revenue change that we did to try and avoid that in the future.
Yes.
So, yeah, that's what that was. So that was another a valid effort and gesture on the commission's part, but the finances didn't back up what you wanted to do.
Well, I think if we have an environmental emergency, I believe we would all step up for that, so.
Just as in your personal life, Commissioner, it's always a man, it's a matter of priorities. So, yes, if at the last minute you had some sort of environmental emergency, you'd have to make the tough decision to fund those expenditures versus others.
Thank you. Well, thanks for the idea, Commissioner, and I would, I would say, let's, let's make sure we kind of plan this out in the next budget cycle. And, you know, perhaps it's worth having a real discussion around a, an actual budgeted line item that we can try to fully fund rather than scraping from reserves.
Yes. I mean, the point would be looking forward so that if we ever did have an environmental emergency or the commission's choice was to, to, to move on something like that, that we wouldn't be scraping it for. This would be forward-thinking so that there would be reserves for that certain purpose.
Yeah, I'd like to move on, but yes, Commissioner.
Thank you. Moving on from that. Dave, how much money are we transferring this year from the property management fund to the general fund?
Well, there's the payment for the 305 or whatever it is, the Wells Fargo building, so that payment's coming out of there. There's also additional revenue. Just for general fund transfers, 300,000.
Three, how much?
300,000.
300,000 of additional revenue this year?
Yes, and historically it's been 400,000, but I wanna stop, I wanna try to wean us off of that so that we can use that money for paying down the other properties.
Okay. I just was thinking what a, what a great thing that is, that how much revenue that we've done year after, you said 400,000 a year. It's been doing that for, for a decade and a half.
It actually generates an excess of a million dollars every year, but depending where the money is earmarked.
Right. But, so I just think that's very, very good, and I'm just happy that we're, we have that.
When people say that government shouldn't run like a business, that's a true example of how we are.
We are. Maybe we should send Pressco, Commissioner Pressco a little thank you note on that one.
Absolutely. Okay.
I feel, I wanna say one more thing. I feel the, the same way, especially with, we don't know 12 months from today, or maybe 10 months, what, what's gonna happen after this COVID that we've all gone through economically. I mean, we haven't even seen it hit. Anyway, you just really need to be, be very aware.
Yes.
Just one other quick point, and I'm not personally that we do anything right now, but on that kind of, as Commissioner Matheson was talking about forward-thinking, looking at our different debt, I saw the interest rate that the city got on the Wells Fargo building. And if there's any other debt that we can re, that's worth refinancing, that might be of value to us, but I don't know if we, if it is or not, what we have.
The way that the bond was done, it would've had to be incorporated, that debt's back out to market.
Yeah, so, yeah, so like you said, it might not be, there might not, there's puts and takes and everything, so.
Okay, good discussion. Yes, we have a motion for approval.
Second.
I have a motion by Commissioner Brunner and a second by Commissioner Matheson. Any further discussion on the board for the tentative budget? Any among members of the public here or on Zoom, please raise your hand. Seeing none. Ms. Latour, will you please call the roll?
Commissioner Brunner?
Yes.
Commissioner Matheson?
Yes.
Commissioner McDonald?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Clark?
Yes.
Mayor Meyer?
Yes. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Or is there any other item before we adjourn?
I have to, one more follow-up statement, sir.
Yes, yes, yes.
The final public hearing to adopt the fiscal year 2021 millage rate and the final budget is scheduled for Monday, September 28, 2020 at 5:15 PM here at City Hall, 121 Southwest Flagler Avenue, Stewart, Florida. Thank you.
Thank you, sir, and we will adjourn at 5:34 PM. And please just give us a moment so that we can begin our regular meeting of the city commission. Do any of my colleagues need a quick break before we move on? Ready to rumble? All right.
Jim. I loved it first. Where's, where's our arts moment? Okay, thanks.
Okay. My grandma was very proud.
Uh huh, that's right.
My mom. Oh, because nothing was up just now?
No.
I know why.
They would put an orange mask on for the children.
Hello, sir. Yes. First reading, yes. Yes. Thank you, sir.
I love accordion music. I grew up in Tweet, Ohio, where there was a popular, and that's where all the wedding stuff, hocus and and accordions.
Oh, Jim.
You have time to sit with them. I know. I think I turned it down.
I turned it down, but maybe it.
Turn down some more.
You know, it has auto-program, maybe it programmed it back up. I set it down to 70. 68?
62.
I keep mine at 82 at home.
Do you really? And you're comfortable with it?
My wife keeps it at 96.
Serving electric, oh, that's really.
How many comforters do you have?
66.
Yeah.
It's nice being in the chilly room.
I could hang with him.
79 in the day and 76 at night. Just take the humidity out of the air.
75 at the day, it's 66 at night. It's so cold in my house.
You probably get used to that working in the.
I do. That's the thing, I can't spoil myself or else I won't go back to work.
Yep. Ready. A good idea.
I love seeing those kids out there.
Hi. Glad you're here.
Thank everybody for your patience. We'll begin momentarily.
Just send them on a call. Just send them on a call.
Yeah.
Oh, it's grandparent day yesterday. I missed it.
Okay, thank you all for your patience. I'd like to call this meeting to order, our regular meeting of the Stewart City Commission on September 14, 2020 at 5:41 PM. Ms. Kind, or Ms. Kendall, will you call the roll, please?
Mayor Meyer?
Here.
Vice Mayor Clark?
Here.
Commissioner Brunner?
Here.
Commissioner Matheson?
Here.
Commissioner McDonald?
Here.
Thank you, Ms. Kendall. Please, everyone, will you join me and stand for the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. To start, we have our arts moment. Mr. Dale Bazone, accordion player, joined by wife and assistant Betsy Bazone.
Do you have a mic?
I'm going to play how great that art and everything.
I'm going to play how great that art and everything.
Thank you, brother Dale. Very good, thank you. Take your time. Somebody's.
Mark Mark. Would you like to take a photo with me? Okay, here, I'll have a hold this.
Betsy. No, dear?
No, dear.
Oh, God. I'm gonna have to make a phone call. Oh, definitely. The accordion started. Thank you. Thank you, Dale. Thanks, Betsy. All right, thank you, sir.
Next, we have our Yeah, right, thank you. Well done. Next, we have our proclamation for Hunger Action Month. Ms. Mr. Mortel, would you kindly read the proclamation into the record?
Yes. Hunger Action Hunger Action Month, September twenty twenty. Whereas hunger and poverty remain issues of grave concern in the United States, the state of Florida, the Treasure Coast, and the city of Stewart, with seventeen thousand six hundred and twenty children and adults in Martin County now categorized as food insecure. And whereas the city of Stewart is committed to taking steps to raise awareness about the need to combat hunger in every part of our city and to provide additional resources that citizens of Stewart need. And whereas the city of Stewart is committed to working with the Treasure Coast Food Bank in mobilizing people about the role and importance of food banks and other hunger relief organizations in addressing hunger and bringing attention to the need to devote more resources and attention to hunger issues. And whereas food banks and hunger relief organizations across the country, including the Treasure Coast Food Bank, coordinated Hunger Action Day on September tenth, twenty twenty, and will continue to host numerous events throughout the month of September to shed light on this important issue and encourage involvement in the efforts to end hunger in their local community. Now therefore, I, Michael J. Meyer, mayor of the city of Stewart, Florida, do hereby proclaim the month of September twenty twenty as Hunger Action Month in the city of Stewart, Florida.
Thank you, Mr. Mortel, and receiving the proclamation are Ms. Ruby Aguirre and Alexandra Lord, Client Services Manager and Community Outreach Coordinator, respectively, for the Treasure Coast Food Bank. If you'd please come and say a few words.
Hello, my name is Ruby Aguirre, and I'm with the Treasure Coast Food Bank's Whole Child Connection Program. On behalf of the C E O, staff, and board of directors of the Treasure Coast Food Bank, we'd like to thank the commissioners for this proclamation, naming September as Hunger Action Month. Treasure Coast Food Bank is the largest hunger relief organization here on the Treasure Coast and Okeechobee, providing food and other essentials. The impact of COVID nineteen has shown how easily people can find themselves in need of emergency food, and amid the pandemic, Treasure Coast Food Bank has seen the need increase two hundred percent. In the months since the start of the pandemic, over ten million pounds of healthy nutritious food have been distributed throughout the Treasure Coast. We cannot do this without your continued support and the support of our over four hundred programs and partner agencies. Please visit our website, stophunger.org, to learn more, and thank you again.
Thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
Here, let's take a photo together. I'm the photo guy. So I get to keep the tie?
And thank you for loaning us the ties and the scarves.
Yes, thank you. Next, we have proclamation for Suicide Awareness Month for September two thousand twenty. Mr. Mortel?
Proclamation Suicide Prevention Awareness Month, September twenty twenty. Whereas September is Su- Suicide Prevention Awareness Month, which directs the community's attention to this public health epidemic destroying lives, whole families, and sometimes entire communities. Whereas suicide is the second-leading cause of death in the U.S. among individuals aged ten to thirty-four years old. And whereas suicide is the tenth-leading cause of death overall in the United States, claiming the lives of more than forty-seven thousand people. And whereas, on average, there are a hundred and twenty-three suicides a day, or one every twelve minutes. And in Martin County, there were thirty-five suicides in two thousand nineteen, or one death every ten point four-two days. Whereas suicide is the only type of death that is a hundred percent preventable. By offering the public education, data, support, and services, we as a community have taken a step towards preventing another suicide by our residents. Now therefore, I, Michael J. Meyer, mayor of the city of Stewart, Florida, do hereby proclaim September twenty twenty as Suicide Prevention Awareness Month in the city of Stewart, Florida, and as a community are honored to be part of the healing process and support services addressing mental illness and drug and alcohol addiction.
Thank you, Mr. Mortel. Receiving, we have Pat Austin, Acting C E O at New Horizons.
Thank you so much, commissioners, for being partners with us in such a very, very serious, important endeavor to get more awareness of suicide prevention. It really takes all of us, all of you, all of our nonprofit partners within the community. For several years, New Horizons was part of a program called Zero Suicide, a state initiative, because truly zero is the only number that's acceptable when we speak about suicide. Part of the initiative was directed toward care, but part of it was through research. And one of the research found findings, which sort of falls into the category, well, of course, we would know that, but still is a bit surprising, is that when someone is thinking about taking his or her life, and you ask that person, most likely he or she is going to tell you, well, that's important to know, but what an incredible burden that then puts upon the person who has asked. And we want to be sure that you know, that all of our community know, that that heavy burden does not have to be borne alone by an individual or by a family. With two-on-one, with NAMI, with New Horizons, we all stand here to help you. We have started a mobile response team out of New Horizons so that we can come to you. It's very difficult sometimes for people to get to us, even though we're in all four counties, so our mobile responsive responders can actually go to anyone, here, anywhere in Stewart, anywhere in the county that we get called. So thank you again for all of your help as we address this very serious issue.
Thank you, Ms. Austin.
Thank you. Thanks, Matt.
Thank you, ma'am.
I'm getting my workout in today. Finally, proclamation, Grandparents' Day in the city of Stewart, Mr. Mortel?
Proclamation, Grandparents' Day, September thirteenth, twenty twenty. Whereas grandparents' day has been celebrated in the United States since nineteen seventy-eight. Marion McQuade of West Virginia founded National Grandparents' Day. She made it her goal to educate youth in the community about the significant contributions that seniors made throughout history. It was also her hope to have the youth adopt a grandparent, not just for one day a year, but rather a lifetime. And whereas grandparents' day is celebrated on the Sunday following Labor Day and honors the love only grandparents can provide. The day's purpose, to honor grandparents, to give grandparents an opportunity to show love for their children's children, and to help children become aware of strength, information, and guidance older people can offer. And whereas grandparents and their grandchildren share a special bond, these hugging, caring, and patient people in the lives of children offer more than a generous dose of love. Grandparents provide an abundance of wisdom, guidance, and stability. And whereas, when grandchildren need a story, grandparents tell the best. A grandparent's wealth of family history and lore often offers lessons of their own. Through humorous stories and some serious ones, grandparents gently point grandchildren in the right direction. And whereas, as the number of grandparents grows from sixty-five million in two thousand and eleven to eighty million in twenty twenty, expect the observance to increase in significance, too. Now therefore, I, Michael Meyer, mayor of the city of Stewart, Florida, do hereby proclaim September thirteenth, twenty twenty, as grandparents' day in the city of Stewart, Florida, and encourage children or grandchildren to spend time and cherish their grandparents by learning about their lives and asking questions.
Thank you, Mr. Mortel, and receiving today, the one and only Ms. Helen McBride. Would you say a few words, Ms. McBride?
Yes, I'd love to, thank you so much. On behalf of all the grandparents in the city of Stewart, thank you for this, and I think this is the greatest night you could have done this, because look out in that hallway, our Tenth Street students from our Tenth Street Recreation Parents, and here tonight are members of the Tenth Street Senior Citizen Group, and we have just, we love our kids like you do, because a lot of you commissioners are where they're playing with them, too. And it was such, I know this summer was hard on us, because we didn't have the children, and they do, each morning when you walk in there, if you feel bad, these kids just cheer you right up and hug you and say hi, and like even tonight, when I walked out, they were waving, they were waving to you guys up there, so it's a wonderful feeling, has Becky and those, to be a grandparent. When you raise your children, it's hard, because you've got to do this, that, keep them in line, but when you become a grandparent, it's the greatest joy on earth. You can have a great time, enjoy them, and if they get to be too much, send them home.
Thank you, Ms. McBride.
Thank you, Helen. So true.
And I'll just say, I especially appreciate you, Ms. McBride, being able to receive today, because folks often call you the conscience of the commission, because you hear it every meeting, and you, you tell us what we need to hear sometimes. And I, and I always appreciate how you do think forward about the children and the grandchildren, about the future, so thank you so much. Okay, we have a presentation. In honor of Constitution Day, the East Stewart Youth Initiative After School Program will be presenting the city commission, this artistic rendering of the U.S. Constitution that they created as part of their curriculum. Please come in, students. McHenry?
Thank you so much and good evening. On behalf of the Reach Up East Stewart Youth Initiative, in honor of Constitution Day and Constitution Week, we would like to present to you this artistic rendering that the children made, reflecting the United States Constitution to the city of Stewart's commission.
Constitution Day is celebrated annually, and this year falls on September seventeenth, twenty twenty.
Way to go.
The U.S. Con- the U.S. Constitution was written in the hands, at the hands of our founding fathers, George Washington, Alexander Hamilton, Benjamin Franklin, John Adams, Samuel Adams, Thomas Jefferson, James Madison, and John Jay.
Thank you.
The U.S. Constitution was The U.S. Constitution was signed by thirty-nine eggheads on September seventeen, seventeen eighty-seven.
All right. You got this.
The U.S. Constitution is the supreme law of the United States, empowered with the sovereign authority of the people by the framers and the consent of, of the legislators of the states, is the source of all government powers, and also provides important limitations on the government that protect the fundamental rights of the United States citizens.
Amen.
Amen.
Okay.
The Constitution consists of seven articles and twenty-seven amendments.
Amen.
Thank you for allowing us the opportunity to have presented this to you and reminded all the importance of this historic document.
Thank you all.
I'm gonna pull back the, pull back the podium so you can see. Ms. McHenry, you have a lot of good readers. Good problem. They read very well. Can I, before we finish this, I'm for four years now, four years now I've been doing the reading of the Constitution at the Tenth Street Rec Center. Will be reading the Constitution on September seventeenth. Due to COVID, it will be online, and we've asked people to read, and the students are going to be reading, so please check out the city's website, and it will start screen streaming, well, Ms. Julie, will it stream on the seventeenth or after the seventeenth? Okay, so we're gonna have Constitution Week. Thank you, thank you so much. Thank you, parents, and good little readers.
I wish I was that, that brave when I was their age. Okay. Let's move on to comments by my colleagues here at City Commission. I'll begin with Commissioner Brunner.
You know, I got this, I'll just be real quick, our mayor's on the front of the Stewart magazine. But if you read, there's six of them, and one's a, he's a doctor in Port St. Lucie, and she does our tourist board, I was on that board, and boy, is she brilliant, and when they brought her into Martin County, they sure did the right thing. But when you read what all they've done and contributing and, and their planning and what they want to see the future of, of our city, it's just, it's just amazing, you just want to go with them, and I'm just so, so proud of you, Mike, but anyway, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Oh, and I wanted to say the children, they read so good, it, there's nothing like being able to know how to read and to get a book and just take off and be in your own world, so thank you, Ms. Mandry, where's she went?
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Matheson?
Yes, thank you, and congratulations, mayor, for being on the cover of Stewart Magazine. On that note, I wanted to let everyone know, historic downtown On that note, I wanted to let everyone know Historic Downtown Stewart has been nominated as a finalist for the Florida Great Places Award. And we could use everyone's help to vote so we're not only finalists, but we win the award. You can go and vote right on our website and follow the link there. That award is presented by the American Planning Association, the Florida chapter of the American Planning Association. So please spread the word, get out and vote, let's make us number one. Like to mention an upcoming event, this upcoming Saturday at Domon Beach, just north of, a little north of Jensen Beach, the Indian River Keeper in partnership with the Ocean Conservation is, is having a beach cleanup from 9:00 AM to noon. And you know, beach cleanups are something you can do safely and socially distance and help out, you know, the environment. And finally, I'd like to mention to all my colleagues up here, I asked our city manager to forward a summary judgment of a lawsuit that went on. And as we're all aware, we voted unanimously to discuss and then potentially raise litigation against the Army Corps at that time last, you know, spring and January. The Center for Biological Diversity, the Palooza Waterkeeper, and the Waterkeepers Alliance were in litigation against the Army Corps of Engineers for not properly. You know, I'm not a lawyer, so myself digesting it isn't the best, but, but identify and taking into account endangered species in our estuary and the Kaluza Hachi. And there was recently a summary judgment that, if I can summarize as best, that basically the Corps is going to be consulting with the plaintiffs on taking endangered species into account. The one mentioned the most was the manatee as far as they pertain to harmful algal bloom discharges, red tide and blue green algae, both here and in the Kaluza Hachi. And you know, who knows what will happen with the lawsuit in the future going forward, but, but at least what's got to be done is basically the Corps was working off of laws 2008, and they had reassessed it as, as recently as 2018, and they didn't take the endangered species and the effects of harmful algal blooms on them into account. And so they were instructed by the judge to, to get together and consult with each other and take that into account. And I'd like to request that we reach out and just send a thank you letter to, to the nonprofits, the plaintiffs for their work supporting South Florida's waterways, you know, just a brief thank you and acknowledge and, you know, thank them for, for their efforts to support our waterways. That'd be to the, to the Waterkeeper Alliance, the Kaluza Waterkeeper, and the Center for Biological Diversity.
Is that a motion?
I would make that in a motion. And I'd also just request that our staff, you know, follow, follow the lawsuit as it may evolve in the future and debrief us.
Would you like that included in the motion as well, that staff follow the?
Yeah, but I don't necessarily need a debriefing at the commission meeting.
Okay.
I'll second the motion for the letter.
Okay. I have a motion by Commissioner Matheson. Ms. Kendall, you got the meat of that motion to write a letter. Sir, would you clarify your motion, please, for the?
The motion would be for staff to draft and bring back a, a letter thanking the plaintiffs in the lawsuit. I'm referring to the plaintiffs being the Center for Biological Diversity, the Palooza Waterkeeper, and the Waterkeepers Alliance, and thanking them for their work to protect South Florida's waterways.
Motion by Commissioner Matheson and a second by Commissioner McDonald. Is there any public comment on this motion? Any online? Please raise your hand if you're on Zoom.
I'd like to say thank you. I think that's a great idea. And you know, this, if we get through this summer, it'll be three summers in a row. Where's Ben out? Ben, how deep, how high is the water? You don't even have to say, hokey chobey, you just have to say, how high is the water? And we know what we're talking about. We've had so much water, Ben, how high is it? Hokey chobey. Thank you, sir. Because they should be awful close wanting to just send it our way.
It's almost, it's just under 15 feet, about 14.8, I think, right? Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you. Was there, was there a comment on, online, sir? All in favor? All in favor? I opposed. Motion carries unanimously. Does sir continue?
No, Mayor, that, that is it. You know, pray for no storms. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. I appreciate your continued leadership and advocacy for the river. Commissioner McDonald?
Yeah, I'll be brief, it's a long meeting tonight. First of all, I'm really happy to hear about that. And, and I've been meeting.
Troy, I'm sorry.
The two weeks I've been back.
Commissioner, could you please speak?
Sorry about that. We had to move away for some other thing earlier. As in the short time I've been back, I've been meeting with staff and, and getting up to speed and on everything that's been going on and there's at the city, and there's been a lot of good things that happened. By the way, Commissioner Matheson, I think that you're doing a great job from everything your staff has told me regarding working on the LOMIS. And I loathe them.
Thank you.
Whatever the, whatever the acronym is, a lot of acronyms. So, um, and I think that's doing, we're in a good shape on there. Also, I just want to bet with the police chief, and I'm looking forward to meeting with the fire chief, I just haven't had a chance, and I'm going to schedule a ride along. And I've done ride alongs with the police department in the past, and if you haven't done one, I suggest you do. It's a, it's really very educational. And so I'm looking forward to meeting with the fire chief. Hopefully, maybe next week I can get, get that scheduled. But otherwise, I think things are going really well here at the city, and I'm really grateful for all of our staff, our, our police department, our fire department, and everyone here. So thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Vice Mayor?
Yes, hi, thank you. First, I'd like to thank Mr. Dale Pazon for his playing at the Arts Moment. Thank you so much. I met him when he was out in the community at a, I think it was a prayer event, but um, he just has, to me, that's, it's historical and the fact that he puts all his time and energy into that form of music, and it was a good thing to have him here at the Arts Moment. So thank you so very much. Thank you. Tonight, I see in the audience one of our highly esteemed veterans, I'm sure that there are the veterans here, but I, I see Mr. Cooper here, Mr. Albert Cooper, and I just want to say thank you for coming out to our city commission meeting and for being around and giving an example for us. So thank you so much. And I also want to thank one of our veterans in the community. If people think that Ms. McBride is a pusher, well, Ms. Charlotte Merricks is a pusher, and I'm glad that she could come out tonight to the meeting. So I thank you so much, and I just appreciate seeing you and looking forward to whatever your participation is. I'd like to pull item number seven and number 10, just for the budget director whom I don't see right now, to just, or maybe, I don't know who's going to do item seven, just to give us a, they have to do with fees and assessment, and sometimes we put these things on the consent and people don't get a good sense of what's happening. Of course, we'd encourage them to go to our city's website and see when we change the fees for the use of facilities and other things. And also, item number 10 just has to do with the 10th Street Recreation Center. So I just wanted to just give a quick summary of that, just so that people who are at home can know or hear what's going on. And I've heard and seen so much in my mail, and I've talked to the city manager about this, I didn't tell him I was going to kind of bring it up tonight, but then I did talk to both the city manager and the city attorney. Well, it had to do with a longtime code enforcement issue. I think it's at 1701 Palm City Road. And if the, if the city attorney wants again, I think we've had this before in our meeting, where we've actually said what our status is and what the status of the city commission is, but when I see a lot of things, and because we can't talk among ourselves as city commissioners, I just wonder, is it something that we need to have a meeting about? And we can't have a meeting about something that's not an active case with the city? So maybe if I could just, if we could, you know, I don't know if the city attorney is willing to just talk, it's just a simple matter that might have finished a couple of years ago.
Mrs. Rudge is trying to stir the pot lately and saying that code enforcement needs to get out there. The other neighbors are pretty content, they, we did put a citation on them and they mowed the lawn. And Mrs. Rudge continues to email you guys, I've asked her to execute the consent agreement to allow us to enter the property and incur the expenses to maintain it, and she refuses. So you know, it's really pointless, it's just how much we play along with her game.
Okay, so I just wanted to find out if it's something that we needed to meet or bring up or discuss.
There is no lawsuit pending and there's.
Oh, oh, sorry.
And we're not party to a lawsuit.
Okay.
I mean, I'm sure there's thousands of lawsuits pending, but not one with us.
I'm sorry, Ms. Rudge.
All right, so I, I just wanted to bring that up just in case we need to set it for any type of discussion and deliberation, and the city attorney is telling me that that's not necessary.
I'm happy to, to address it if, if something does come up, and if we do get joined in a lawsuit, obviously, I'll bring it to your attention immediately.
Okay, all right, thank you. So is it okay, I'm going to pull item number seven and number 10? And can I move for, oh, you haven't said your comments yet.
I haven't yet. But I'll, I'll hold your spot for that motion for approval.
Okay.
Does that conclude your comments, Vice Mayor?
For right now, yeah.
Thank you. There, if there are folks that are attending virtually, some folks who here might be somewhat keyed into this, there was recently a little bit of drama about our budget process and potentially creating a, a line item for, for the river, potentially for a river advocate position. That would be a, a legal, a legal position. And somehow along the line, I understand that an email was sent, emails were sent to my colleagues here on the board that implicated that I was going to be making certain motions and that certain people needed to support them. And for, for, some of you might not even know what I'm talking about, but for those who are interested in this and who have, who have heard about this, I would just like to reiterate to everybody that we all sit up here, we've all been duly elected by the public to make decisions in your best interest. And we take every decision, I know I can speak for myself, and I'm very confident I can speak for my colleagues on this board, that we take our decisions carefully, that we think them through, that we talk to staff, that we think about the best for everyone. And I would like to say that I will not, I, I will not tolerate anyone trying to, appearing to willfully try to violate sunshine to try to create conversations among the commission, however well intentioned that may be. We will not, I will not be bullied into trying to make motions or significant budget amendments. And I'm sure I can speak for my colleagues that, that we won't either. We do what's in the best interest of, of our entire community. And sometimes it's unfortunate that things have to move slowly, especially with St. Lucie. But we're, we're all doing what we can and, and we're here to do everything above board. So I hope I'm making myself clear to anybody who is aware of those situations. And that's it for me. Mr. Manager?
Yes, sir, just one quick thing. I had a reach out from the VNA about the Christmas parade, and much like the Fourth of July event, that's one event that takes a lot of pre-planning and time and effort to get actually, to actually make that occur. And so the, the concern is about actually holding the event this year due to COVID. And so they were putting some processes in place to protect the actual parade participants, those who are on floats and so forth. But the major concern is those spectators. So there's tons of spectators along the roadway and compliance from spectators, they would not be able to control, but they could control the participants. I'm not asking for you guys to give a yes or no specifically, I wanted to put that in your head so you can get some thought process in that, and then I will bring it back to you for the, for the next meeting to kind of give us some direction, if that's something that we would want to go ahead and give them the green light for. Now, they are the actual event organizers, so even if we gave them the green light for it, they may still decide not to do it.
Which parade?
The Christmas parade.
Christmas parade. So we'll have a more formal discussion next meeting?
Yes, sir.
That sounds good to me.
And that's all I have.
Thank you, sir. I'll seek a motion of approval of the agenda with, well, however you'd like to do it.
Move approval.
With items seven and 10 pulled, is that correct, Vice Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I have a motion by Vice Mayor for approval of the agenda with items number seven and number 10 pulled, and a second by Commissioner McDonald. Is there any public comment on the motion for the agenda, approval of the agenda? If there's any online, please raise your hand. Seeing none? All in favor? I opposed. Motion carries unanimously. Now we'll move on to general public comment. This is for, for folks who would like to make, address the commission as a whole on any items that are not currently on this agenda. If you have a comment about any agendated item, please reserve that comment until we discuss the item before a vote is called. I do have one green card here. If anybody else would like to make a comment, please approach Ms. Kendall and collect a green card to fill out. And if you are on Zoom, please raise your hand.
Or press star nine if you're calling in by phone.
Or press star nine if you're on phone. To start with here, we have Ms. Linda K. Richards.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name's Linda K. Richards. I was born and raised here in Stewart. I'm here to talk specifically about the overall development of rental apartments on the outskirts of Stewart. And there is an agenda item about Bridgeview that kind of falls into this, but this is just about what's going on. So we've seen time and time again, the county land is being annexed into the city, and then the city is requesting an amendment to the future land use map and changes the land use. We saw this in North Stewart, where Watermark now has two massive four-story buildings that are shadowing over Windermere, which is a single-family development. We've just seen you guys approve the future land use change at Spring Tree in South Stewart, which is going to add multiple three to four-story buildings in an area where you don't even see two-story buildings. And then today, you have the second reading on Bridgeview, another piece of property that was just annexed in. And now they're asking for the land use to be changed from light, from office commercial to high-density multifamily and allow two four-story apartment buildings to be built there. These three apartment complexes will add 776 new households to the city of Stewart. That's an increase of 11% of households in the city of Stewart. With that comes increase of traffic. Our schools are already overcrowded. Can our public's work handle this? So as a point of reference, the population growth of Stewart from 2010 to 2019 is estimated at 6.3%. So over nine years, the population of Stewart grew 6.3%. Yet in a handful of years, we are going to increase the households by 11%. And the Census Bureau says 2.6 persons per household. So we're increasing the population even more. It's very frustrating to watch my quaint seaside town, and I know that's how you guys call it, be subjected to massive housing growth that was never intended. Future land use maps were created to prevent these massive growth spurts, but the developers, with the city's help, have found a loophole. They take in the land from the county, the county would not allow it, annex it into the city, and the city allows the development. In closing, I would like to remind our city councilors of the future land use element objective ASICS, which talks about neighborhood stability. Quote, "Established residential neighborhoods shall be protected from the intrusion of competing intense uses through adherence of the future land use map densities and intensities established in the future land use element, implementation of the city's land development regulations, and control of traffic and access for the protection of established residential uses." Sadly, the established registered residential areas of North Stewart and South Stewart, Spring Tree, were not afforded this protection. I am asking the city of Stewart commissioners to please look at what the developers are doing to our county and to our city, and to put the brakes on any more massive rental apartment units. Our quaint seaside town. Our quaint seaside town depends on it. Because if we keep growing for the sake of growing and overdeveloping, we're gonna look like any nondescript suburban community in South Florida. It's not wrong for us to want to keep Stewart a quaint seaside community. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there any other public comment here?
Ms. McBride?
I'm gonna jump ahead to next meeting. Because of the shows on TV, there are reruns, I've been watching Hallmark. And all through the month of July, it was Christmas shows. I think they were made in the 50s. But they didn't have parades. What they had was, like in our parks, in Memorial Park, I'm gonna use that, all the beautiful lights and lights where people could just stroll through. And if you have a guitar and you want to play and sit on a bench and play. But if we don't have the parade, maybe that we should think, let's do something with our parks. Even if we had Memorial, Flagler, and the merchants would decorate their stories in that. You know, we could bring just strolls, not crowds, because I won't go to a parade like I, I'm not going to the beach because it's just too crowded. But we have to think of, you know, the health, but, but next month, just watch that, watch Hallmark like I'm doing. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. McBride. Good idea. Any other public comment here in person or online? Yes, we do. Is that Nancy, please unmute yourself if you will?
Yes, I believe I have.
Yes, hello, we can hear you. Please identify yourself for the record.
My name's Nancy Bates. I live in Stewart.
Yes, Ms. Bates.
I just want to agree completely with Linda K. I was born in Miami, raised in Hollywood. I've lived in Stewart since 1990. My husb, my uncle has lived in Stewart since 1959. And as a small child, I came here all the time. And now I've lived here for quite some time with a brief move to Knoxville. And in Knoxville in East Tennessee, I watched up there the damage that they have done to the smaller little towns. I, I, again, born and raised in, in Hollywood, Florida, and watched the changes there. My, my uncle's 90, 88, my mother's 92. And I've, I've learned from my family members on standing up and saying, please, yes, do not change these small towns. It has destroyed our state and other states. And I just really beg of you, the commission, to have the courage to look at what we have and what we are potentially going to be doing by adding things like a big Costco and more buildings and just more people. It's, it's just wrong. And I, I just beg of you to pay attention to that and really look at it. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any other comment online? Thank you. Okay, we will move on to the consent, less items number seven and 10. Do I have a motion for approval?
Move for approval.
Second.
I have a motion by Commissioner McDonald and a second by Vice Mayor Clark for consent. Any public comment on consent, less items seven and 10? Any online? Please raise your hand. Or phone, press star nine. Seeing none. Ms. Kendall, will you call the roll, please?
Commissioner Matheson?
Yes.
Commissioner Brunner?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Clark?
Yes.
Commissioner McDonald?
Yes.
Mayor Meyer?
Yes. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Moving on to item number seven. Appendix A, fees, rates, and charges. Mr. Mortel, the resolution?
This is resolution number 92-2020, a resolution of the City Commission of the City of Stewart, Florida, adopting Appendix A, adopting new fees for Moore Cemetery, amending chapter two, chapter 20, chapter 22, chapter 34, chapter 36, and chapter 42 of the city's code of ordinances and providing an effective date.
Mr. Dias or Mr. Peters?
I'll take it. I believe Vice Mayor Clark pulled the item. This item actually gets touched by every department in the city. Excuse me. Sorry, swallowed something there, popping the mask. So it gets touched by every department in the city. And I don't know if there's a specific section that the Vice Mayor would like to address, but I will just briefly touch that. The primary changes were some emergency medical rate changes to match what the counties are. The rates for more cemetery to add so that we can sell those funeral plots that go along with the ordinance that's been before you. Rate study adjustments that have been pre-approved through, for both sanitation and, is it water treatment as well, Dave?
Yeah, utilities, yes.
And some detail rates for the law enforcement off-duty details. There are some other stuff, but nothing, I know one of her interests was the rental facilities, nothing as far as rental facilities was, have been changed.
And more cemetery, cemetery fees are there, but the actual ordinance wasn't fully adopted yet?
No, we still have the second reading to go. From the first reading, we're still adapting some of the comments that, that you had had. And I know you've asked for us to establish a meeting. So I'm working on establishing a meeting so that we can all be to discuss.
Is that satisfactory for you, Vice Mayor?
That's fine. And it goes in line with, of course, we've had our budget and, well, we're gonna do the final budget. But anything to do with fees, I just like people to know that we're, we're working on those things and that they're being adopted.
Do I have a motion for approval of item number seven?
Move approval of item number seven as published.
Second.
I have a motion by Vice Mayor Clark and a second by Commissioner Matheson. Any public comment on item number seven? Any online? Please raise your hand or press star nine if you're on a phone. Seeing none in person? Seeing none online? Ms. Kendall, will you call the roll, please?
Commissioner McDonald?
Yes.
Commissioner Brunner?
Yes.
Commissioner Matheson?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Clark?
Yes.
Mayor Meyer?
Yes. Motion carries unanimously. Next, item number 10, the award of RFP number 2020-105, pre-engineered design and installation of 10th Street basketball shade structure. Mr. Mortel?
This is resolution number 110-2020, a resolution of the City Commission of the City of Stewart, Florida, to approve the award of RFP number 2020-105, which is a pre-engineered design and installation of the 10th Street Rec Center basketball shade structure to the top-ranked firm MJD Construction, Inc., providing an effective date and for other purposes.
Thank you, Mr. Mortel. Mr. Dias?
Yes, sir. This is an item that was budgeted in the current fiscal year's cycle. This is a steel structure, pre-engineered structure, similar to, if you've ever seen J.D. Parker's cover over their basketball courts. It's aligned to go over top of the dual basketball courts on the backside of the Civic Center or the 10th Street Center. And after, shortly after the item is completed, both those courts and the tennis courts are set to be resurfaced in the fiscal year 2021 budget. And this should be completed, the timeline, I think, would be completed by the end of January. So that's the completion phase of the, of the structure. It's completely lighted inside, interior, and will be pre-wired for addition of fans and stuff in the future.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Mayor, if there are no other questions, again, like I said, I just wanted to make sure that the, the city manager had put the summary out during this meeting. I'd like to move approval of item number 10, award of fees under RFP 2020-105.
Second.
I have a motion by Vice Mayor Clark for approval and a second by Commissioner McDonald. Is there any public comment on this item in person? Or if you're online, please raise your hand or press star nine if on phone.
I wanted, before we vote.
Yes, please. Commissioner?
This MJD that, that was, came in with the best bid, what is the price on that? Do we have it?
I believe it's $333,000.
Okay, thank you. That's it, that's all.
Thank you, Commissioner. Okay, seeing no, no questions. Ms. Kendall, will you call the roll, please?
Commissioner McDonald?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Clark?
Yes.
Commissioner Brunner?
Yes.
Commissioner Matheson?
Yes.
Mayor Meyer?
Yes. Motion carries unanimously. Great for us to start rocking and rolling over there at 10th Street. Okay, on to commission action. Item number 11, road closure for the Stewart Boat Show. Mr. Mortel?
This is resolution number 68-2020, a resolution of the City Commission of the City of Stewart, Florida, approving a road closure for the 47th Annual Stewart Boat Show from Tuesday, January 12th through Monday, January 18th, 2021, along North Dixie High, Northwest Dixie Highway, formerly State Road 707, from Albany Avenue south to the old Roosevelt Bridge to Fern Street at the FEC Railway crossing north of the St. Lucie River drawbridge, subject to Florida Department of Transportation approval, providing an effective date and for other purposes.
Thank you, Mr. Mortel.
Staff, land.
Yes, we have a presentation that will be by Susan O'Rourke, who will be presenting for the Maritime Industries.
Okay, thank you. Ms. O'Rourke?
Susan O'Rourke. I'm a traffic engineer with 35 years of experience and a lot of experience with special events and the city of Stewart. So the, can I take this off while I'm up here? Does this have to be on?
That's fine if you must, yes.
I just can't think. The, the marine industry had retained me to take a look at this item. And basically, the road is closed for the boat show from, for, for patrons from Friday, for Friday, Saturday, and Sunday. But in order to set everything up in a safe manner, we begin that install on Tuesday. So the, the question was Wednesday and Thursday, Friday, everybody was good, but there was a little question about Tuesday and extending that out a little bit. So we've done a couple of things. I met, spoke with Chief Tumminelli on the phone. And we've talked to the promoter. We've obtained some documents from the DOT on the traffic volumes. I've talked to the people about the timing of the bridge. And so what I've got here is just briefly, because this is kind of traffic engineering stuff, and I don't know if it's gonna show you. We basically put together, in addition to what's been done in the past, okay, I don't know if I'm doing.
Are you trying to use a pointer?
No, I was just trying to advance.
There we go.
So, so basically what we're proposing to you is that we would do three things that haven't been done necessarily to the same extent. So we're going to have additional police officers at, oh, no, so, sorry about that. If you want to just go back to the other one, it's just zoom it so you can see the whole thing. So it's not like so, basically, this is a series of signs, little guys in the circle, those are where the police officers will be. And we will be retaining the officers from seven to nine and four to six, seven to nine in the morning and four to six, Tuesday through Friday, at the intersections of US One and Wright Boulevard and US One and Joan Jefferson Way. What we've also done, and you can't really see it from, if we zoom it out a little bit, basically what we're going to do is similar to what you're seeing out there now, a lot of good advanced signage and message boards to direct people. So if you're coming from, you know, we'll get the message out there early. So if you're on the beach or you live, don't come to US One, come in the back way. If you're coming in off of Dixie Highway, make that right at Becker, so that, at Baker Road. So the, the signage will be such that we'll try to minimize the impact on the, the key hotspots, which would be Joan Jefferson and Wright Boulevard. But the officers will be there in that, some people, that's where they work, so they're gonna have to go in that way. So the second slide that we have is just kind of the engineering thought process behind it. And I won't get into all the numbers, but we just wanted to make sure what we're diverting, that we're not putting an impact on somebody that would have an adverse impact by, by trying to solve one problem, we create another. So this is just showing you where we think those numbers are gonna go. And we've made sure that, that that capacity can be accommodated, or that impact can be accommodated on the alternate routes. And then the final slide really is just a, an augmentation to what's already been done. So there's already been little signs out there about the shuttles, and we're going to enhance that signage program so that we're directing people, as you know, we've had parking out at the shopping center at Wright and US One, and then also out at the airport. And we want to get that airport one really to be our, our best shuttle spot. But, so we're gonna put that advanced signage out to direct people to that location. So we think with those three key elements added to the program that, you know, with all of us kind of working together and, and keeping our eyes open, that will offset the impacts and be able to pull that Tuesday together. So that's, that's what I spoke to the chief about. He was comfortable with that. And so we're, we're presenting that to you. So that, that's the engineering side of it. And these guys are available if you wanted to hear any of the economic side or.
Thank you, Ms. O'Rourke. I know I have a few questions, at least on the economics, but is there any traffic-related questions for Ms. O'Rourke?
I have a, I have one question for Susan, but I also just have some general questions for Susan. I just couldn't hear you. What day, are the officers are gonna be there? Is that Tuesday?
They're gonna be Tuesday through Friday.
Okay, I'm sorry. I just couldn't hear you.
Yeah, sorry. It's standard rush hour. I know. I can't speak here or see, so with my mask on, I don't know.
Is that Tuesday from 7:00 AM or so, early morning Tuesday?
Right, so the basic kind of rush hours, the peak hours, seven to nine in the morning and four to six in the afternoon.
And then I just have some general questions if we're ready to move on to.
Does anybody have any other questions about traffic specifically or closures, planned closures? No. Thank you. Yes, yes, please.
Thank you. So first of all, I think the, I think the boat show is a, is a great event. It's been, what, 46 years, I think? And I think it's not only is it important to a lot of our residents, it's even more important to our, our marine industries. And so I think it's important that we make sure that this works. And so, but it's a, it's, it's been a compromise. And I know that John and I believe Tom have been working with Dave Dias and Jim Krawski and other staff members, maybe Mr. Mortel as well. So I just want to make sure, John, if you could just confirm the conditions that the city staff has put on. There's a list of them here in our agenda. You guys are good with all those conditions and you guys have worked them out and.
Yes, we are. And actually, I would, I would tell you that we, we've just received information that Fort Lauderdale, the Fort Lauderdale show, which is in October, the end of October, is moving forward because they have recognized that during COVID, the marine industry has been really a driving force in keeping their local economy going. So they're moving forward with that show to make sure that, irregardless that, that they can keep, keep moving the economy, keep the economy open and moving forward down there. What that's gonna allow us to do is a lot of our members attend the Fort Lauderdale show. Our, our promoters will be attending as, as, you know, ticket, ticket purchasers. So we'll be looking at that show from an attendee perspective and from an exhibitor and vendor perspective to come up with, you know, to figure out what worked down there, what didn't work. And so we'll be able to adopt the things that work and change the things that didn't work and we'll be.
Couple of big things I'm concerned with is, and I know you guys are as well, is the curse to COVID and, and the COVID plan and making sure, it sounds like you guys are talking about that and looking at Fort Lauderdale as suggestions. But also what I'm, what I'm really concerned about is, and this has nothing to do with COVID. It has, or it's anything that we have control over is what happens with the Roosevelt Bridge. And I know it's supposed to be done, but yeah, there's a, there's a.
We, of course, understand that that's, I mean, that's, if something happens, God forbid. And I mean, that's, we understand that that's basically a non-starter and.
And I have spoken with them and they understand that. I've spoken with Jerry from the District Four Secretary from FDOT and that if they don't get, if FDOT doesn't get that work completed, that they won't allow them to close the road.
And then finally, there was just one little note here on a memo by Mr. Krawski. And this is more for city staff. So is that, let me find this here, where is it at? It's, there was something about an outstanding sanitation bill or something of $360, $329.
A what?
Sorry. Anyways, he's, on your memo, Jim, on page two, under, it says outstanding balance due to the emergency dumps on Sunday.
I just spoke with Mr. Peters in regard to that, and we believe that that bill has actually been paid.
Okay. And, and I know that this year you guys are, I know you guys versus the promoter have been handling. And so you guys have, and I just want to make sure everybody's good. You guys have been working together and you can work with our city staff. And, and I'm, I'm really happy that you guys are gonna go forward. So I just want to make sure everybody's on the same page. So. Okay.
Yes, Commissioner?
I just wanted to say that, you know, with this COVID and our economy and everything that's happened, I mean, this is one of our biggest things is boating. And next to tourists, everyone comes here, you know, our beaches are boating, golfing, fishing. And it's so important for you. fishing, and it's so important for you all to hold this. I really believe that you need this. You need that shot in the arm. So, I really support the, the boating industry.
Well, I would just tell you that we've had some, you know, the boating industry right now is, is really hot. Everybody is buying things. I'm sure Commissioner Matheson is aware of that. The reason that's occurring is during this COVID period is that it's one of the few activities people can do and do it safely. So, what's happening is, is people are out buying boats. They're buying, spending money at West Marine, their boat owner's warehouse. They're going out spending money on gas and food and drinks to go out boating. And so, our impact, we don't just impact our own limited marine industry. We sprawl out through the entire community, and, and I truly believe that we have been a significant factor in keeping the local economy going all summer long because of the increase in boating that's occurred over the past several months.
We too need that shot in the arm, you know, so much it does for the city and the county. And, you know, lately, there's been some building coming up. For that, we didn't have any building for eight years. Economy was horrible. People were out of work. And now, things are starting to grow a little bit, and then COVID comes. Some people still want to, want to build, but, you know, I look at this magazine today, and, well, a couple of days ago, and Nancy Terrell, you know, her, her arts culture. And then a couple of my commissioners and their ideas and what they think, you know, young and infield. We have, we don't, I could go on and on, but I want to support you. People come to this town, come to this city because it is a very fine, great city. And anyway, that's it.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Matheson, did you?
Yeah, just, I'm, I'm very supportive of the boat show. Everything that's been said is, is spot on. Some stats I've learned over the, since COVID, literally this year has been the most fishing licenses sold, especially in the state of Florida, record numbers historically. You know, my other job, West Marine, literally cannot keep products on the shelf because when you're told to social distance, those that can afford that luxury are taken out and going to the water or, you know, going to the beach, as I just mentioned, a beach camp. So, you know, Stewart has a long history with the boating community, and, and I'm very supportive. I do agree with Commissioner McDonald, you know, that I will always support our, our staff on their recommendations for the, the required sanitation devices and disposal, as well as their recommendations on tram and police officers to, to make this event successful and function properly. But as long as those, those issues are resolved, I, I support the boat show. I mean, it's, it's not easy talking about upcoming future events when you've got the current bridge situation. We've got COVID, and then, of course, our plastic ordinance with city permitted events all on top of it, but I wish it the best, and I'm excited about it.
We were the first event to implement that.
Yes.
When it went into effect, too. So, we do our best to work with the city. You know, I think we've done, done a really good job in working with the city, and we try to bend over backwards to accommodate your, the needs and requests to make it, life is easy on staff and you guys as, as we can.
This won't be an easy go-around with, with everything that's happened, but we look forward to a successful event.
Vice Mayor, yes.
Did, did anybody make a motion to approve Resolution Number sixty-eight dash twenty-two yet?
I have not heard one.
Okay, I'll make a motion to approve Resolution sixty-eight dash twenty-two. I support the boat show. I know that we have all the difficulties. I appreciate Ms. O'Rourke talking about the traffic so early, but the traffic, if you talk about it early, it's always going to be there, and it just happens, and it comes up when that area is closed down. That area has been highlighted because of the issues with the Roosevelt Bridge, and of course, if things continue, it will be again highlighted. They're aware of it. They're aware of the COVID situation. I'm sure that the industry has standards that they are going to try to implement and work through to ensure that the patrons who come there are well taken care of during this event. I'm just praying that most of us will all be here to participate and look forward to a wonderful, another year again. I would have even gone further to say that we should work more with them and participate in some way, and I've discussed that with our city manager in full disclosure. And I know that sometimes it's difficult for us because there are still people who do have issues with the traffic. Sorry, oh, with my, my mic, I moved around. Thank you, Mary. They've had issues with the traffic situation, and we get the calls every year, and, you know, we all know these things happen, but we really appreciate this signature event, even though it's not an event for the city, occurs within our city and within our Martin County. And I just wish you all the best in your planning for the people that you're planning for to attend, and that things will go well. So, I make a motion to approve Resolution sixty-eight dash twenty-two.
May I, may I ask for clarification, Vice Mayor? Are you, are you making the motion with staff's recommendations?
Recommendation, yes, yes. Including, including staff's recommendations.
And are you also, are you also making a motion for Tuesday rather, because there was some discussion in staff level about?
Yes, yes. As presented to go, to give them that extra time. Again, like I said, we know in full disclosure, it is very difficult. Traffic is difficult. The extra day is difficult. They need the time, and I'm hoping we're going to hear from our residents.
Okay, I have a motion and.
I'll second it and just make a comment. You know, I get why they need the extra day. The airshow takes them like two weeks to set up for, so, so, yeah, so I second that motion with the staff recommendations and the Tuesday.
Okay, I have a motion by the Vice Mayor and a second by Commissioner McDonald. Well, I would like to, I guess I'm in the wet blanket today. I do support and value the boat show, and, you know, for full disclosure, the city manager and I had a virtual meeting with representatives at the boat show some time ago to discuss. I, I, I understand the impact to our local economy and to our marine industry, which is a critical part of Stewart, not to mention the history and heritage of the boat show. So, so important. I, I am, I would like for us to not lose sight of what a burden it is on our, on our residents during that time. And not just, you know, look, traffic happens. I get it. Nobody likes waiting in traffic, and it's only a week, you know, you can, some people might say, just buck up. It's good for our local economy, but it does create some huge challenges for us, for public safety, for, for those who work at the hospital and have to commute. It's a, it's a, it's a challenge. And so, what I really would like to do is for us to, you know, maybe we talk about this every year, but in the same way that, that the county commission has, has kind of had to have some difficult conversations about the Port Salerno Seafood Festival and the challenge that brings to jamming it into a small community, the same way, I know that our marine industries are along the North Point area, but it's a significant artery for our vehicular traffic, and it is increasingly now with our CRA focus becoming more and more of a neighborhood. So, I would, you know, I think some long-term visioning, we really need to think to the Commissioner's point earlier about thinking way into the future down the road. You know, at some point, where, I mean, is this boat show, could we do it in a better place? Could we think about another area that might make more sense, that doesn't choke the city for that length of time, that still can benefit the marine industry, can still benefit our local economy with folks hopefully coming to downtown and shopping around the, and staying in local hotels and beds and breakfasts? You know, I, I, I think we just, we, I would encourage us all to be open to the idea of trying to think about where we could do this in the future, because from the, you know, just the brass tacks of it all, we're not, we're not making any money per se on this. So, as much as, as important as it is to be the Stewart Boat Show in Stewart, you know, one day down the road, would it make sense trying to have it in, you know, at the, hopefully that new Rio Marina CRA area that, or, you know, if, when, when City Hall moves, could we think about doing it here on South Point? Anyway, just.
Mr. Mayor, I agree. And historically speaking, the other side of the North Point Peninsula, which there so happens to be an old marina that's not in use right now, is much deeper waterways, which you could put larger boats in, but I agree with the potentials of the future. Who knows what might come of other locations if they were available.
Another interesting thing that I learned in discussing with representatives from the boat show was, we talked a lot about, I was really trying to extract as much information as we could get on the direct economic impact, right? How many local businesses are being patronized around this event? That's important to me to support it. And then also, the tax revenue. And I learned an interesting thing, which I don't even know if, if it's true or not, but I think we, did I say that for all of the, all of the yachts and boats that are sold in the city of Stewart, the sales tax does not come back to Martin County. It goes to where the, where the boat is registered, which to me is a, is, is not good. I think about the, all the economic impact that we're getting from this, from the sales of boats during that, during that time. And boy, wouldn't it be great if we could capture that sales tax revenue? So, I don't know. I think maybe this is an opportunity for us to, to leverage our, our state legislators at, you know, that are going up for reelection and see if we can get some support for something to, to change that. Yeah, Commissioner.
Oh, yeah, I think, yeah, sales tax revenue is, is great, but I, what I focus on is the economic of the private industry. So, we may not capture that sales tax, but when a boat manufacturer here in Stewart, Martin County sells a three million dollar sport fisherman that they, that they built from the ground up, that's revenue that's, that's going right in directly into our communities through jobs, through vendors, through manufacturers. And when, and it, and I've been, I have a friend of mine watches this one, one television show, and it's all about these people getting, I think it's sponsored by Florida Sportsman, and it's based, for the most part, a lot of the, it's based here in Stewart, and they're retrofitting old boats. I'm sure.
Dreamboat.
Is that, yeah, that's the one. And it's amazing to see all the different marine manufacturers that are right here in Stewart, in Martin County, and all of the things that they do, and they're actually, many of them are known worldwide. Armstrong Nautical, for example, Jimmy, was it Jimmy Smith?
Jimmy Smith, American, Whittaker.
Yeah, I mean, it's just, it's in the boat. So, when we focus too much on tax revenue, we sometimes lose sight of the real jobs and the real people that are being impacted every day by, by this industry, and it impacted in a very positive way. And it's a, and it's a, it's a tough business, and it's getting harder every year with environmental considerations.
Sure.
It is not the friendliest stuff to work with, and, and it's hard getting trained labor, because we're not training, necessarily training people to, to do these type of blue collar jobs. But it's, it's, we're blessed to have it in our community, and blessed to feel the fact that we have sailfish right off our shore, because otherwise, we probably wouldn't. So.
Well, I, I agree with everything that you said, and I, and I would like to clarify. I don't mean to say we shouldn't have it here because of the sales tax.
I know.
But boy, wouldn't it be nice to also get the sales tax back in the county?
I, I'm not disagreeing with that either. So, it's just, but it's easy to, you know, over the years, I learned it's easy to get tunnel vision on the tax revenues because that's what we need to operate. So.
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, if I could just, one thing, I, I know you, you did ask us to, to try and look into some economic data for the city of Stewart. We did do a, you know, a significant amount of research trying to do that. We've talked to Ted Stolfi from the Economic Council, the BDB, the Nerissa over at the county. We've called Tallahassee to the Department of Economic Opportunity. We've talked to St. Lucy County EDC. They all come back with the same answer. It's just not feasible to break out.
Sure.
The finance, the economic data for the boat show just for the city of Stewart. So, I just wanted you to know, we, we didn't forget about that. We did it, and that was going to be part of my remarks, is that we, we did do that as you had requested, but.
I wanted to add also, we've kept you a long time standing there as we all go on about, what are we going to do about the boat show? My son works for American Custom Yachts, and he started at nineteen, and he's worked his way up. He's almost forty. He makes a pretty big figure today. He can do about anything you want him to on those boats. And what I wanted to add, I was on a conversation, I don't know who it was, you might have been on there. I went on the other day on the business of the marine conference.
The roundtable, yeah.
Was a few minutes late, and I snuck in and listened, and if, man, you guys are, you hit it on the head about a trade for these kids instead of going to college, the money they can make. I mean, all the things you do to that boat from the time it starts forming till it takes off. It's amazing. I just wish we had some type of school or education, or people would donate and get this started, because it would, these kids could make, well, they could make what DJ makes.
We are working on that. That is one of our main focuses for the foreseeable future.
Make more money than these kids in college.
All, all of our members are dying for workers.
I'm proud of you guys.
One other thing, Mr. Mayor. I have two letters here in support of the boat show from Jeffrey Smith Galleries and from Bill Moore, the Downtown Business Association. I was told they were emailed to you all, but I guess I would just.
Please leave them with the clerk. Yes, thank you.
Put them in the record.
Thank you, sir. Well, yeah, again, I, I just, I think we, we really need to continue to have some conversations about how we can potentially move this in the future, as painful as that would be. It's critical. I don't want to lose it, but we need to think about where it ultimately will live as we grow. So, okay, is there any public comment before we call for the vote? Any here in person? Any online? Please raise your hand or press star nine if you're on a phone. Seeing none. Ms. Kendall, would you call the roll, please?
Vice Mayor Clark?
Yes.
Commissioner Bruner?
Yes.
Commissioner Matheson?
Yes.
Commissioner McDonald?
Yes.
Mayor Meyer?
Yes. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you all very much. Item number twelve, three thirteen to three fifteen Osceola Street, Waterview Condominiums. This is a major urban code conditional use. This is also a quasi-judicial item. Mr. Mortel, would you read the resolution?
This is Resolution Number ninety-six dash twenty-two. A resolution of the City Commission of the City of Stewart, Florida, granting a major urban code conditional use approval to the properties located at three one-three to three one-five Southwest Osceola Street, as described within the attached legal descriptions, granting approval for a multifamily development consisting of fourteen residential units on a point five-eight acre site to allow a density of twenty-four units per acre for parking within the building envelope, providing an effective date, providing for a timetable of development, providing for conditions of approval and for other purposes. And as the mayor points out, this is a quasi-judicial proceeding. You should also note that unlike a PUD, this is a single reading event.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Mortel. Do the ex, do the commissioners have any experte communications to disclose? Commissioner Bruner?
No.
Experté?
I haven't spoken to anyone, and I'm here with an open mind.
Commissioner Matheson?
I've only spoken to staff, and I'm here with an open mind.
Commissioner McDonald?
I have not spoken with anyone on this item, and I'm here with an open mind.
Vice Mayor?
I want, I think I want to speak to the city manager on this. I'm here with an open mind.
I have, I have not spoken with anyone, and I am here with an open mind. Mr. Mortel, would you kindly swear in anybody giving testimony?
Will those giving testimony please rise and raise your right hand? Let the record reflect. There are four people being sworn. Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth, so help you God? And let the record reflect that all four testified affirmatively.
Thank you, Mr. Mortel. Mr. Mayor?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Steve Mayer, for the record, Development Department. The Resolution ninety-six twenty-two is a, a major urban code conditional use approval at, for a location at three thirteen and three fifteen. It's one property with two addresses at Southwest Osceola Street, and it is gaining approval for multifamily development consisting of fourteen residential units on a point five-eight acre site. The applicant is here tonight to, to present their. The applicant is here tonight to, to present their application, it's Greenlight Studios, Aquas Texas, and this is the location of the property, it's on the north side of Southwest, Southeast Osceola Street, and the, on the river. The future land use of the property is urban district, the zoning of the property is urban waterfront, those are going to remain the same. The waiver request for the major urban code conditional use is for density, the code allows 15 units per acre by right in the urban district. The applicant is requesting 14 units on a .58 acre site, which equates to 24 units per acre. The city commission may review development up to 30 units per acre as a conditional use approval. The proposed density of 24 units per acre is proportional to adjacent uses and other multifamily developments downtown on Seminole Street in, in particular. The applicant is providing for new quality housing and compliance with all other sections of the urban code, with the exception of the second waiver, which is parking underneath the building envelope. 24 units per acre is consistent with the density approved downtown. Now, in concern with, or within regarding to parking within the building envelope, the applicant is meeting and exceeding all the other requirements, such as, in regards to parking, they are parking for the 14 units by providing for 14 under, underneath the building, 14 two-story, two-car garages, sorry, and the city commission may review this departure from the urban code again by this conditional use approval. Staff finds that the proposed building provides for quality pedestrian scale architecture along the street front, and the, the talking of the parking within the, within, underneath the building will be out of the view of the public right of way. This meets the intent of diminishing the presence of parking along the right of way, and allows the applicant to provide a 10-foot fist on either side of the property. The site plan is part of your agenda, I just want to point to areas out, not only where the building is located, in this blue area right here, and you have the parking underneath being the garages on either side. You also have, in general, you have the two townhome units here, located along the right of way, and then you'll have the other 12 units of condos along the waterway. This red line represents a 10-foot buffer distance between the right of way and, and the property, and there is no construction, no vertical construction within that 10-foot line, as per our comprehensive plan. This location in green is the location that they would like to request for the art. There isn't an approved art piece yet, that will come later, before the building of the, before the bill, building permit, they'll come in with a, an actual piece of art to get approved at CRB, but they'd like to at least show you where they intend to put the art. The landscape plan does show the existing sidewalk and a street trees that would remain. It also shows the 10-foot buffers between the, the side property lines and the, and the landscape buffering there. The elevations are also part of the application, and you can see the, the height and the four stories over parking, which does meet our code on the basis of where the finished floor elevation begins. The finished floor elevation would begin in this dotted line right there, which is 18 inches above the crown of the road. The, this would be the roadside of the elevation, this would be the waterside on the left, and you could see on the roadside that there is a two, a two-story building with a, with the balcony.
Mr. Mayor, a few, could you kindly just go back to the landscape plan? Okay, thanks. I did notice on the, on the site plan, or landscape plan provided, and the details, that there was mangrove to be removed, and I just wanted to clarify, I know that there, permits are required for that, along with, with the, what is it, at the Water Management District, I believe, or is it the DEP?
DEP.
And then, and, and like a certified arborist has to be involved with that process, a certified, you know, company. Our approval of this site plan with that information in there does not, does not exempt them from any required permitting process with, with DEP, correct?
That's my understa, I believe you're correct, and I do have a condition that states that all applicable state licensing must be obtained before approval. So, that would fall under that, that they would need the applicable DEP permit to remove the mangroves.
And the, so, the, I should have gone out, I pass, I pass by it all the time on my bicycle, and I've never walked on the property, as long as I've been anxious to see something happen there. Does it currently, the land currently, well, I guess I can ask the applicant too, if you don't know, but currently make its way down to the water, is there like a natural bank there?
The applicant's engineer is here, and he will be making
All right, I'll reserve those questions for the applicant.
Yeah, he would have more technical data. The, the renderings of the architecture is also in your packet, and you could see type of architecture that they're proposing, and how that looks, and I would like to defer to the applicant for their presentation of the, of the product. Now, on September 1st, the CRB recommended approval of the resolution with three modifications. One was to add a condition for the boardwalk easement, which staff has done, and also the applicant has provided on a new revised site plan that they've given me today. It acknowledges the, the boardwalk easement. We can make that a part of this approval, is that site plan, which shows it. We can also, the, the CRB also requested to modify the existing condition to not allow multiple HOAs or match, master HOAs, but just a single entity, we have modified that condition for that reason, and then also to modify a condition to ensure that the common areas, such as the stormwater exfiltration systems, are maintained by the HOA, and we've added that in that condition as well. So, we recommend approval of the resolution as it is, and turn over to the applicant for the presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Before we turn it over, I wonder, is Mr. Peters or Mr. Volker, are they present back there, watching from the
Yeah, there they are.
galley?
We are.
Mr. Peters, if you don't mind, I just wanted to, I was curious about the exfiltration, and I did read Mr. Capra's statement and the map. So, if the HOA is responsible for maintaining the exfiltration and, and water attenuation, is that a, what sort of oversight or regulation is there on that? Do we inspect, do, do they provide records of their maintenance of that to us, or to DEP, or the Water District?
I could tell you none of the above.
Okay.
But I can tell you, we're working on that right now, as we talk about exfiltration trenches in all of that onsite properties.
Okay.
Make sure they're maintained properly. We don't have those regulations in front of you yet to review. Kevin is working on it. So, so I would tell you, it's the homeowners association issue.
Sure.
If, for whatever reason, they failed to maintain it, then that would be a code infraction.
But, do we have any sort of qual, qualifier in there for what maintaining it ought to look like, or be, or be beholden to?
No, but we should.
Okay, that's what I was getting after.
No, but we should.
So, I would like for, if possible, since this is, we got one bite at the apple with this, instead of a, a two reading ordinance, if we could have the, if the applicant is willing, if we could have a placeholder, or perhaps you're, say you're working on it right now, if you could work to provide whatever sort of framework language would need to be within that. I, I don't think I could support it without a placeholder, because I don't want to have to go back later and try to beg.
I, I would think that you would ask the applicant for what their maintenance plan is.
And see if that passes muster.
Yes, and then allow us to review that.
And then, but allow us to have authority to be, to, to say that, that works or not.
I think so.
So, I don't know how that needs to be written into the I don't want to
Mr. Capra, is he here?
Yeah.
Kevin, would you be able to give any insight into that, as it relates to how we would regulate?
Well, we've been, we have been working on how we manage this better for infill development, and some of the solutions do involve exfiltration and French drains and so forth. In terms of where we have a HOA involved, I think more appropriately, it's, it's by condition in the agreement itself, in the development agreement, and part of that condition, I think, should be that the city receives a maintenance plan, and are updated on an annual basis on, on that plan. Maybe in a similar way as that we have PAMPs in place, where applicants report on how, you know, that they're maintaining that system.
I want to be sure that whatever we do, staff feels satisfied that we have enough, there's enough of an enforcement mechanism, that whether it be a code violation with enough teeth, or, and I'm sorry, I don't mean to assume that the applicant wouldn't go do what they were supposed to do, but obviously, we've got to have something in there that allows us to hold this accountable. Would it be like a condition of, I think, or?
The, with that condition would be, to the effect that
Whatever, whatever, it depends on what it is, but the state agency authorizing, whatever they're authorizing, would have some regulatory requirements that would not be in the city's purview, but that would be, I'm assuming, like, if it was trimming of mangroves, the EP only allows them to be trimmed up to 20% of the time, and they can only be trimmed once per year, and then they get re-inspected and things like that, but I don't know exactly what, what
Well, I, I would think Mr. Peters would know best.
We, we will find the line.
Okay, so
Invite it to Kevin.
Okay, wonderful, thank you very much.
We'll, we'll work with the applicant, I think the, we, we've heard the intent of where we need to be with that condition.
Okay.
I can assure commissioners that, that will be implemented.
So, Mr. Mayor, just for clarification, you'd be looking for language, basically, any motion that would be made, you'd be looking for language that would, you know, in, in the development documents, that would, maintenance and annual inspection, so to say, of the exfiltration trenches.
Could you help me explain what you're, what you're saying, what you're trying to say?
Yeah, so the ex, so the stormwater, like, you know how we normally do a PUD? Stormwater is managed in a pond, and because of this small parcel and being urban district and urban waterfront, it's exfiltration, meaning all that stormwater is going to be captured, it's going to go underground and to, you know, cisterns and various places, and it will ultimately discharge to the St. Lucie River. So, it's a, it's a pretty quick shot to the river, so we want to make sure that there's enough safeguards in place, regulatory safeguards, so that, again, not that it wouldn't be properly cared for, but who knows, down the road, like, we see, I'm thinking about the pervious pavement. I know, I have heard from a lot of folks over time about how the pervious pavement, pervious asphalt is great when it's started, but if it's not maintained, it loses all of its functionality. So, the same, and, and if we don't have an enforcement mechanism, or, or some way to hold it, hold it accountable, all of that exfiltration, attenuation, storage, cleaning before it enters the river, if it's not properly maintained, it's just going to be a slew right into the river, and, you know, we want to make sure that that's accounted for.
All right, thank you.
So.
Maybe, maybe we should ask the applicant
Yeah, sure.
engineer to describe how that system works, and what measures they will have in place to maintain the operation of that system.
Well, we could call it Mr. Capra, but also, I don't know if the applicant would like to make a, a more general presentation first, if that suits the board.
Okay.
And we can ask some more specifics.
Absolutely, the applicant has prepared a video for you to watch first.
Is that video on?
My name is Tyler Adams, and I am the planner and a principal developer on this project. My address is 100 North Cottonwood Drive, Suite 104 in Richardson, Texas. Alongside Steve Novotny with Aquas Texas, we're pleased to present this project to you this evening. We're excited to present this project to you today, and the potential to contribute to the smart growth of Stewart. We are planning on building a new project at 313 Osceola Street. The current zoning is urban waterway. The property is currently vacant and was cleared in 2006. We have office uses to the east, west, and south. Downtown Stewart is a stone's throw away from the property, and we are intending to build a small condominium building, contributing to the mixed-use character of the neighborhood. We made our first priority the street side of the development, keeping the building height low, and engaging the streetscape with two live-work units. We set the back third level of these units from the street to engage the corridor with a two-story structure, while keeping the taller portion of the overall building farther away from the curb line. Per city ordinance will provide a work of art in an alcove we are providing for some architectural interest. We will be rebuilding the seawall and repairing the existing boat dock. We have vetted these permits, and will work through these issues as we finalize the building permit. The slips on the boat dock will be for residents only. We hope to have one dock per unit, but we will need to finalize that number with the proper authorities. We have designed this project as a condominium project. The HOA will maintain the property, and will be responsible for the compliance of all city ordinances, dock facilities, and seawall improvements or repairs. Under no circumstances will the dock allow a live-aboard situation. We are proposing a 14-unit development, which staff has confirmed is a density consistent with the area. We're proposing a two-story building on the street with a setback third story. The main building is planned as a four-story residential building over a parking garage. We've worked with city staff to comply with a 45-foot maximum building height, measured to the center line of the roof line. Based on the level given to us by city staff as the crown of the road, our current planned building height is 41 foot six. The final height will be subject to detailed engineering data. However, we'll continue to comply with the current height regulations along the waterside of the project, given the residential nature of the development. Along Osceola, we have designed two townhome-style units to encourage work-from-home use. We have planned a limited amount of square footage right at the street level of the building, separate from the rest of the space. These areas connect with the streetscape with pedestrian-level stoops and landscaping. Overall, we're providing architectural treatments that fit within the city ordinance. We're providing balconies from each unit, third-story balconies from the townhome units along the street, and full balconies along the width of the waterside units. This site has several trees we're planning on saving. In addition, we're planning on providing ample shade for the parking area and pedestrian ways along the streetscape with evergreen shade trees, while keeping the vistas along each side of the building open with palm trees. Overall, our plan is over and above the landscape ordinance by three trees. We have added a 10-foot boardwalk easement along the seawall. In addition, we are including an exfiltration system using a bio soil for storm discharge into the river. On this site, we have two significant factors. Number one, the compatibility of the neighborhood at the street. We kept the building design, height, and density here lower to engage the street and historic downtown at the proper scale. Two, maximize the asset of the river by providing sweeping views of the water while staying within the bounds of the existing zoning code. We believe we have achieved these goals, and are pleased that staff supports our interpretations of the city of Stewart code. Thank you, and we will now take any questions.
Yes, Commissioner?
I have a few questions for the applicant. Parking, it looks like all the parking is garage parking for each unit?
Yeah, that's accurate. Sir, well, could you kindly state your name for the record?
Tyler Adams, I'm at 100 North Cottonwood Drive in Richardson, Texas.
So, where are guests going to park?
Guests can park either within, with, within those parking spaces or on the street.
So, with every, one of the goals of the city has been to, with the residential developments, is to put electric car chargers in. Obviously, this, since the parking's going to be in the garage, there's not to be a general parking, would you be willing to at least put the infrastructure in every garage for electric car charger?
Yeah, I mean, that seems like here going forward, it's going to become more and more popular.
Okay. You know, and there's been some conversations already, and I don't, and I know the mayor has some questions, but maybe to kind of speed things up a little bit, if, Joe, could you come up and talk about the exfiltration system and, and the maintenance? And I know that's your, I know that's your subject, but I'm curious about it too, and I figure we
That's fine.
along, so, but in how the maintenance will be done, and, and the lifespan of that, of that type of drainage system?
Good evening, Commissioners, Joe Capra for the record. Okay, so, as I explained last time on, on one of the other projects, we pretty much mirrored the same type of development in a treatment train of stormwater. So, essentially, what we have in the middle of the project is we have
So, essentially what we have in the middle of the project is we have, uh, inlets that drain into the exfiltration system that ultimately go to the, uh, go, go through the site and then ultimately go into the bioswale. All that water is retained and there's a control structure, uh, at the, at the, um, seawall, the new seawall that we'll put in and basically control the water as it goes out, okay? So, essentially the three, the parts of that are the inlets, the exfiltration system, the bioswale, okay, which is planted, and you saw a picture of that on one of the details. Um, and so, uh, just so we're clear, this is where the exfiltration goes, which goes right down the center where the, where the garages are, okay? And then, obviously, this is where we plan to put the bioswale on that side and then discharge here. All right, so let's talk a little bit about, uh, maintenance, okay? Uh, first of all, the, having an association is normally the way that is handled, which you've got that all covered and the applicant has no problem with that. Um, typically, you clean out inlets, you clean out, uh, the exfiltration system, that's one way of doing it. Uh, basically, they, they vacuum those out, uh, which is not uncommon. It's a requirement and some, um, and as Kevin has pointed out, what we typically do is we provide a plan. We tell them about, we, we explain to you what we're going to clean out and how often we're going to report that. And usually that is done at least once a year, a, a report that we certainly give to your public works department. Um, just so we're clear, the, um, this project technically doesn't need any other permits from, because of the size of it, but we will comply with the standards of the South Florida Water Management District. In this case, that's who normally would permit something like this and, of course, the city's criteria. Um, if there's any exfiltr, if there's any pervious pavement, um, on any project, obviously, those should be vacuumed and cleaned once a year and reported also. Uh, that is a common, uh, as, as, as you know, that is, uh, you know, there are some things that we're trying to put into the city codes, but that is common in, in the county, for example, okay? So, we, we were thinking about man, managing that the same way, if that's okay with y'all. So, we don't really, I've, I've spoken to one of the, one of the partners, Steve back there, and basically just, uh, we went through it and I, I think, uh, that's standard process that we talk, normally follow, so I don't think they have a problem with it.
Joe?
And the conditions.
Uh, you know, Mr. Mayor, I think, uh, trying to, thinking about a solution to your question about how we ensure, uh, I think one of the way we can do that is, um, short of creating, you know, till we get our own regulations created, uh, we could condition this approval that CO can't be issued until a detailed, uh, management plan is created and approved by our, by development, development department staff. And, uh, maybe we might include, you know, so, and then, of course, they would consult the public works department. Would that work for you?
Sure.
Okay, so, would that be, would that work for you guys to create a, a maintenance plan, management plan? Kind of like a PAMP, but for?
It, it's similar to that, just so you know, it's about a one or two-page.
Yeah, yeah.
Item. I, I just want you to know.
Yeah, sure. That's, that's fine.
So, that's.
You know, if, if it was one sentence and it worked, you know, it might be a run-on sentence, that'd be fine, but, you know, a detailed plan would, you know, would probably, good, good quality grammar would be better, but, um, than what I would probably write, but, uh, what I think that, uh, if we could do that and condition final CO on that plan being submitted and approved by, um, by the development department, then I would be, I'd be happy with, with that and that the condition that y'all put the infrastructure in each garage for at least one car, you know, one charger, um, that, that could be, uh, and that'd be a great option for you guys to sell your condos anyway, so.
Do you have any other questions? While you've got the floor?
No, I think I'm good now, so.
Okay, thank you.
I agree with, with, with everything that's been said and, um,
thank you, Mr. Kappa, for explaining. Commissioner Brunner?
I, I wanted to say I really like the design. I like the concept of it being two-story and then it levels up and the way you can just walk in and out and, uh, yeah, it's really cool. Cool job. Is that you on the film or not?
Yeah.
Okay.
I know you can't see.
Thank you, Mr. Woods. It's cool. I like it.
Uh, Vice Mayor, did you have any, um, questions?
I'll make a motion if that's okay.
It's okay.
A motion for approval conditioned upon, uh, the infrastructure of the car chargers and for the, uh, management plan for the exfiltration system to be, uh, submitted to development and approved, uh, by development prior to CO.
I have a motion by Commissioner McDonald and a second by Vice Mayor Clark. Um, I have just two more quick questions, one for staff. Um, and maybe it'll touch on, maybe the green light or you, Mr. Kappa. Um, when I look at the site plan at the, um, the, with elevations, I guess I should say, with the curb height, um, and the crown of the road, um, in staff report, it said that crown of the road, uh, that the first floor, finished floor, um, of the four-story area was measured to be 18 inches above the crown of the road. And yet, I mean, granted, I don't, I would guess it's drawn to scale, maybe it's not. Um, when I look at it though, the, uh, curb height, um, versus the finished floor seems to be quite, there's, there's, uh, significant gap. I think the curb height was listed at eight foot something and the finished floor was 13 foot something. Is the curb that much lower than the crown of the road?
It is, in this, in this instance, it is.
Okay.
Yeah, the curb is lower than the crown of the road.
Okay.
By that much, yeah.
Wow, that's quite a bit. And then, um, and then the sidewalks, I'm surprised that Commissioner Matheson didn't touch on that. Um, are we? Was, uh, I mean, I'd be happy to continue the charge there. Um, being that this is, you know, uh, Osceola, do we, is there any, uh, availability to expand the sidewalk a bit? It looks like it's a four-footer. Is that correct?
I'm sorry?
Is it a four-foot sidewalk that's being presented?
Uh, yes, yeah.
Along Osceola?
Continuing what's already there and what's in place.
Thank you for bringing that up. That slipped my mind. I was actually going to ask about the easement and making sure it's just running with the land in perpetuity for the boardwalk, but, um, go ahead, Mayor, on the sidewalk.
Well, I mean, we have a motion, so it's okay. It wasn't included, but I, um, I just don't want to lose sight of.
Do we need to modify the motion?
On the sidewalk, there, there's, uh, there are some existing oak trees that are there and there's a, there's like a little two-foot, um, wall that kind of protects, so you've got kind of little bit of landscaping, or no, it's the other way around, sidewalk, a little bit of landscaping and then those, and then those walls. So, in order to keep those trees and everything, we're just kind of leaving that stuff alone.
I see.
Yeah, I'd prefer not to remove the oak trees and I noticed they were there.
It could be an option, though, to, you know, encompass the trees or go around them a little bit. Um, I just don't want to lose sight of that, of Osceola being such an important part of our downtown and losing the ability to have a six-footer there. Granted, there are existing sidewalks, um, adjacent parcels, but. And then, um, is there any, has, was there any discussion or is there any possibility around? Um, I know there's a seawall presented, but around a living shoreline, I don't, do you even have enough room to potentially plant beyond the seawall or in addition?
We've, we've talked about what we're going to put in front of that seawall. I think, um, the engineer has, has recommended a not-living, uh, seawall at this point, but it is something we can look at.
Well, I, I would like you to look at it, but again, this is a one, a one-trick pony of proving this. Um, for the future, you know, I mean, uh, all the other, all the other communities south of us especially that are dealing with, um, sea level rise and storm, and, uh, storm flooding, uh, sunny day flooding, um, living shorelines compared to seawalls have been, um, have been a, a, a big thing that folks are focusing on and apparently they're really good for, um, long-term sustainable protection of our shoreline, so. Uh, I know it's a tight spot and I know, you know, it compromises your ability to do the stormwater bioswale and, and the decking in the pool and all the amenities that make these attractive to sale, but, um, if, if there was any way to encourage planting mangroves or some other type of, um, plant, native plant material, living shoreline material in and around or beyond the seawall, that certainly would be good for the long-term viability of the project.
Okay.
Okay, well, thank you. We have a motion and we have a second. Is there any public comment on this before we call the vote? Is there any online? Seeing none? Okay.
May I clarify who seconded?
Uh, I believe it was Vice Mayor Clark.
Thank you.
Um, Ms. Kendall, we call the roll, please.
Commissioner Matheson?
Yes.
Commissioner McDonald?
Yes.
Commissioner Brunner?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Clark?
Yes.
Mayor Meyer?
Yes, motion carries unanimously. Thank you all. Um, next item is the major cur, major urban code conditional use approval for the Walton Building relocation. Um, this is Resolution 97-2020. Mr. Mortel?
This is Resolution 97-2020, a resolution of the City Commission of the City of Stewart, Florida, granting a major, major urban code conditional use approval to 111 Real Estate Holdings LLC, owner of the property located in the City of Stewart, as described within the attached legal description, granting an approval for the relocation of the historic Walton Building, or 33 degrees, from city right-of-way at Decker Avenue to the north side of parking lot located at 209 South Albany Avenue, allowing the front building facade to be set back from the front property line for the facade width of the relocated building to be less than 80% of the lot width and forego the requirements for the minimum building height of two stories. For arcades or glazed openings and balconies along the street facade, writing an effective date, providing for a timetable of relocation, providing for conditional, conditions of approval and for other purposes.
Thank you, Mr. Mortel. Mr. Reitz?
Good evening, Mayor. Tom Reitz for the record, Development Department. Uh, this item was continued from last meeting. Um, I can go over this, uh, with a quick overview and then the applicant, I believe, is here, um, to answer any questions.
Um, before you go over it with an overview, um, or have there been any significant changes?
There has.
Okay, yes, go ahead, sir.
Sure. So, this is a major urban code conditional use to relocate the historic Walton Building, um, from Decker Avenue where it sits now to Joan Jefferson on the north side of the parking lot. Uh, it is a single parking lot owned by Mark Breckbill that is tied to the Stewart-Arches Building. It's, uh, two, has an address of 209 Albany Avenue. So, the proposed location is on the north side of the parking lot. Um, when it's moved, it'll also have room to locate pavers at the front of the, uh, relocated building. Also, since the first, I don't, not the first reading, but the first time this was proposed, uh, a new legend has been, um, uh, included as part of the conditions for the resolution. There are 41 necessary and provided parking spaces, of which 27 are required and will be used both by the Stewart-Arches Building and the Walton Building once it's relocated. In other words, there's 14 extra, uh, parking spaces. Also, there will be a grease trap and, uh, utility line, uh, with Public Works approval. So, just to review the variances that are being requested, the front setback, normally, um, it's five feet. He, Mark wants to set back the building a little bit further to allow for the brick pavers and people to walk up and, and place their orders. Uh, the front building is less than 80% of the lot width. We all, will also forego the requirement for a minimum building height of two stories. It just, it is a one-story building and also to forego the requirement for arcades, glazed openings, and balconies. Picture of the parking lot at where it will be relocated, uh, superimposed Walton Building, mostly to scale as it exists over at Decker Avenue. And that concludes staff's presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Reitz.
Was, may I ask, is there a picture of the back of that building and all those metal things on top of it? May I see it?
Uh, I, I did have a picture. I did not include it and, and I think there are pictures available.
Yeah, there's a folder on that desktop that has pictures of the current building.
I might have one on my phone.
I think we should let staff keep the pictures because I, I'd have to put you under oath, I think.
Yeah, I don't think we want, we have one that captures the, um, the units that you're talking about on the roof.
Yeah, I was just concerned about those, but we'll go ahead.
Um.
I interrupted. I apologize.
No, no, Commissioner, I just, will you clarify? I mean, uh, you, just let us know what you're talking about, what are you concerned about?
In the back of the building, on top of the roof, are, it looks like two big air conditioners and two big other metal things. I don't know what's up there, but it's, it's just.
Yeah. I know that when it was on the location that it was originally moved from, the back of the building had an external refrigeration system that was attached to the building.
Like a walk-in cooler?
But I don't know if that's what we're referring to.
No, not a walk-in cooler. So, okay. Maybe Mark, Mark, when Mark comes up, he'll tell us.
There are, we, we do know that there are some units on top of the building. This is just, please don't capture those from this viewpoint.
So, are there any questions, um, for staff before we might ask Mr. Breckbill to come up?
At this point now, we can hear from Mr. Breckbill or?
Yeah, I'll wait till the presentations.
Do you have a presentation, Mr. Breckbill, or, okay?
Mark Breckbill for the record. Uh, the, uh, presentation is from Alice Luckhard. She's online and she's got a presentation to make relative to the building itself and the historic significance of it. Uh, so if Alice is there, hopefully, uh, she can chime in and we can get her in here and she can make her presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Breckbill. Uh, Ms. Luckhard, if you're there virtually, um, we'll have you unmute yourself, please.
From a quasi-judicial perspective, we recognize she's not sworn, but nobody has a problem with that, right?
Are we quasi-judicial right now? We didn't follow the procedure.
Well, I mean, it, it's a, it's a development order. It doesn't, it all, if this is being presented, is it being presented as evidence or just is it being presented for demonstrative purposes? I think it's more demonstrative in nature.
Okay.
She's not being called as an expert to like, say that this is how the stormwater is going to work.
Well, I, um, if you, shall we swear her in, Mr. Mortel?
Uh, we don't need to. I, I don't, I think the presentation is just her doing kind of a little general history. It doesn't necessarily qualify for any code thing. It's more just supplemental. I just pointed it out.
I trust your judgment.
Yeah, just hearsay.
Um, while we're getting this sorted, oh, never mind.
Do we have Alice on? Show.
Bottom left.
Okay.
The land this small building, Walton Building, sat on belonged to the Bento family, who had purchased the vacant property, corner lot number nine, from the Stedman family in October 1907 for $125. The Bento Bakery in Stewart had been started in February 1906 on adjoining property. The nearby corner, lot number nine, though, remained empty for years. During the building boom of the early 1920s, a building contractor, Fred M. Walton, from St. Augustine, had come to Stewart area by 1917. He was known for his finely constructed buildings and residence using the very popular Mediterranean style with the use of strong. concrete blocks and a stucco exterior finish. He built on lot number nine, leasing the land from the Bentalls, his new construction office in February 1926. The business office for his construction enterprise in the 20s was located on Avenue C, which would later be named Akron Avenue, and Second Street. The building itself was known as the Walton Building. He had a mortgage for $6,500 that he took out from the Seminole Bank for its construction. Many of his construction projects were right in the downtown Stewart area. He did the addition in 1923 for the remodeling of the backcock garage along Dixie Highway. A second story, the very same size as the first story, was put on the building and the entire building then finished over in a buff and white stucco. The nearby Flatiron Building was constructed by Walton. Harrison Hotel in 1923 was constructed at the corner of the Dixie Highway and Avenue C by Walton and had three stories that include 20-day rooms and an owner's apartment on the upper two floors and two large stores on the first floor. Also along Dixie Highway, he built the new Little Dixie Cafe, and later that would serve then as the Stewart Office Equipment Company owned by Ed Meninger. Bigger projects were awarded to Walton, 1925 and '26. The famed L. Bitlor Apartments, consisting of 57 apartments located along High School Avenue and facing Fourth Street, now later known as East Ocean Boulevard, was in a U shape and three stories tall. Work on the Third Lyric Theater was begun by Walton and his crew on June 1st, 1925. He had an average of about 35 men a week employed in the construction of this large structure. It was ready for its grand opening in March 1926. His work was celebrated during the January 1926 parade for the creation of Martin County. He also constructed the Hibiscus Apartments along US-1, the El Belver Hotel with 38 rooms, the Pitchford Apartments, the residence of Earl J. Rico, along with the store and apartment building for Harry Speedy. Walton built hotels, apartment buildings, cafes and business buildings on both sides of the tracks during the 1920s. Its construction stood for decades. Walton Building was serving him well, right in the heart of Stewart. In 1940, his Walton Building, which had served Fred well for so many years, even during the very destructive hurricanes of 1928 and '33, everything was about to take a new turn in Stewart's history with this building. Walton's construction operations became limited during the 1930s due to the Great Depression, so he mostly was handling repair construction of other buildings. He renamed his business in 1939 to the Stewart Building Company with Fred Walton as the president and Charles Leighton the secretary. In 1940, the building became Mary's Beauty Salon, operated by Mary Roden for a very short time, then used also by a local photographer. The next new owners were Edna Decker and her husband Alan, who in the spring of 1945 were ready to transform this former office into a first-class beauty salon. Edna first leased it, then purchased the building. Besides providing a much-needed service for Stewart's ladies, Edna always bestowed contributions for any charitable events. Again, the shop withstood the massive destructive 1949 hurricane. The popular beauty shop continued under Edna Decker's guidance in the 1950s throughout the decades until Edna was ready to retire in the 1980s. She sold the business portion to one of her longtime beauticians, Nancy Gilson Frederickson, who had worked for Edna for 26 years. It was the Downtown Deli in the late 1990s, then 33 Degrees, and more recently the Stewart Burger, all popular with locals and visitors to downtown Stewart. Downtown Stewart needs to truly live up to its honored name and preserve those buildings that are non-replaceable. Repurposing a structure can be beneficial to the community and save a part of Stewart's history. To save this 1926 building, it was moved in 2016 to another location for the time being. So well-built by Walton, it was a fairly easy move. Long-time historic preserver Lou Lowery was on hand for the move. Too many historic buildings, the Fraser Home, the Stewart Hotel, the Hibiscus Apartments, St. Lucy Hotel, and even the original Stewart Jail are examples. They've already had their past destroyed solely because they were old. This building has age, it has history, and can continue to provide purpose to the local citizens.
I want to thank Alice for putting that together. And, you know, even I've had a lot of familiarity with the building over time.
The land, the small building, Walton Building sat on.
And so I want to thank her for doing that. And, and that is the primary purpose of what we're doing here. I'm not a developer. It wasn't a development project. It's, it's to preserve some history, a little piece of history of Stewart. But one of the things that Alice didn't mention too is that, in a roundabout way, is that Fred Walton was the, was the first businessperson to locate the, in a business district west of the tracks. So he kind of expanded Stewart a little bit to west of the tracks and, and added something there. So, you know, I appreciate that. I wanted to answer any questions anybody has. I, I did mention, I think there, there was a question about the roof. Commissioner Burner mentioned about a roof. There is one AC unit that's for the roof, and then there's one that's actually on the side of the building. And the, the cooler, which is what gave it the name 33-degree building, was a 33-degree cooler, which actually affixes to the back of the building. And that's why the one shot of the building where you see it looks all like it's rough there and everything, that actually was covered by the cooler and is intended to be back-covered by the cooler. The cooler will go back in place. The person who's going to lease the building is going to use that cooler to refrigerate ice cream and root beer and for root beer floats and ice cream sandwiches. So, and other uses. But, so they're going to take and make use of that, that building. And, and, and I know that the contractor, John Erickson, JDL Builders, we've already got a plan. We've, we've got some restoration, of course, to do on, on the base. And, and the outside, we have a tenant, Sue Parks, who you remember, you may remember Sue. Sue was, she had the Stewart Scoot and has done Segway tours in downtown. She continues to do that. She loves downtown Stewart. She was displaced by New Urban and the Azul Apartments. And so this is an opportunity. She's really excited about the opportunity of leasing this building and, and doing some inside renovation to make it available as a takeout restaurant. I would say that she has done, like I said, she's very excited about that. I think it's great when we can take a historic building and we can save it and have it make, have an economic use. It really will be a functioning restaurant, takeout restaurant. One of the reasons we moved it off the street was we didn't want people standing in the sidewalk, blocking the sidewalk while they're ordering. And there's room there for handicapped access. So that's why we had to pull it out so we could get some ramping in there. But otherwise, that's the only, you know, that's the only change we're making there from a, is the only reason we have it off the street. The other thing I would say is that we have managed to tuck it in, in effect, because it is a small building, flat roof. We've managed to tuck it into the trees there. And we've preserved all of the trees. We may lose one tree in the process, but not the big one that's on the corner and, and none of the big ones in the, in the side. So at best, we've got one tree that we may have to take out.
It will have the air conditioner on top of that little building?
Yes. Yeah, it's, it's going to be, it's not a big air conditioning unit. It's a small building. Actually, the air conditioning unit that was on the top of the building was to run the freezer. And the one that's on the side actually runs the inside of the
The little unit, the little window unit?
No, that, that bill, that one wasn't even really being used. There was an actual separate unit that's on the side that was being used for, to air condition the building itself.
So when you drive in there, Mark, to the, to the back, you go and see the back of it. What's the back of it going to look like?
It, it's, it will be painted. It'll look like part of the building, actually. You won't be able to tell. The freezer fits right, right into the back of the building, and that freezer and everything is all painted as part of the same design of this building. And the top of it becomes part, level with the roof. So it just looks like the back of the building.
And I forgot to ask when I saw you the other day, that parking lot, were you putting in all grass? You redoing that whole parking lot?
No, no. On the existing parking lot, no, it's staying basically the way it is. We had to, we had to put in an extra dumpster because if you're going to use, if you're going to, in the city, if you're going to have a property that's a restaurant, you have to have a double dumpster. Basically, we've got that in place to, to allow for that. And Mr. Mortel helped with some of the confusion we had in terms of how the parking, the original proposal wasn't phrased correctly, put together correctly. And, and I want to thank Mike for helping us get that squared away so that we got it, you know, we got it put together correctly.
Good, Commissioner. Yes, Commissioner McDonald?
Hey, Mark, what is your timeframe for not only getting it moved, but presuming that you get an approval tonight, but also for getting CO and having it done and operational?
Well, you know, as soon as, as soon as the, the city approves it, we're pulling a permit to move it. And then, and John will be putting in the, the foundation. The goal is to get it there as quickly as possible, ideally before season, because Sue wants to get started, get up and be, be ready for season. Actually, for her, this is just about right. If we can get open, you know, in, in 30, 30 days or so, 45 days, you know, barring hurricanes and everything else. But actually, the building has gone through all the hurricanes. I just don't know about the rest of us. But anyway, we're going to, we're going to do that, get that ready to go. And I would hope that it'd be ready by season. I'm not exactly sure what construction Sue is going to do inside because she's going to redo the inside that's suited for what she's doing from a restaurant standpoint. She'll be responsible for those improvements, of course, under city code. But I think my understanding is she can do them pretty quickly.
And you'll be putting in the grease trap and stuff as part of?
Yes, that'll be part of the project. There is a bathroom in the, in the building itself, which is, is really just for the people that are working there because there's no sit-down restaurant. So we don't really have a public bathroom. We have a bathroom that's, that's set up for, for the building itself, for the, the people that work there. But it will be open if, if somebody needed to use it. We can, we can allow them in there. There's, you know, it's, it should be available to, for public use. And it is handicapped, it was handicapped compliant, I think, when we, when we put it, when it was put together.
Commissioners, there is an expiration of this resolution there. If he doesn't have it CO'd by August 31st, 2021. And I would ask that if you guys do end up making a motion that you add to that by September 1st, 2021, if it's not moved, that you authorize the city manager to remove it from our property within any means necessary.
Mark, can you do that?
Yeah.
By when?
September 1st, 21.
Oh, yeah, September 21.
Yeah.
But you're planning on getting it done this year?
Yeah, yeah. Brownie's waiting to move it right now. I'm sorry, Commissioner. Brownie's waiting to move it right now. So as soon as, he needs those rails. Those things are expensive. If he would have charged me the full price, and I want to thank Kim for not doing that, it would have cost me about $80,000 to rent those rails that that building's sitting on. So he wants to get those rails as quickly as possible. He's doing a lot of moving of buildings in, in the Keys and other places. So the goal is to get that moved quickly.
Mark, would you, would you be fine with a condition that required you to have the permit to move it within 60 days?
Yeah. I mean, I hate to have hard and fast cases because you don't know what the situation is, you know. If we get a, you know, we're right in the height of hurricane season and we get storms, you know, we might.
Not moving it, get the permit.
No, I know. But I'm just saying, you know. But yeah, I, our goal is to get the permit right away. We filed the application. So for the move, we had already filed it. So, you know, yeah, I don't have a problem with that.
Just for the permit, 90 days in that way?
I don't, I don't, let me make sure with my contractor. Yeah, yeah, we're good.
Okay. I'll go ahead and move for approval with the condition that you have a permit to move it within 90 days and, and manager Dyess's requirement that it be moved by September 2021.
I agree with the timeframe.
Or I can remove it with.
Or you can remove it, yes.
Could I have a few questions of staff?
Yeah, please.
Well.
I can second it, then you can.
Okay, so we have a motion by Commissioner McDonald and a second by Vice Mayor Clark for discussion. Yes, Commissioner Matheson?
I had a couple of questions that make me slightly hesitant. I do see the history of the building. The building was moved in 2016 to city property. What were the conditions when it was moved at that time? I mean, as far as the agreement with the city?
It was, not that it matters now because obviously this is water under the bridge, but the condition was that it would be placed there on a temporary basis. And at the end of 90 days, if it hadn't been relocated to a new location, the city had the authority under the prepayment to the moving guys who verified that they in fact were paid to have it taken in the form of gravel to the landfill. But obviously, nobody wanted to actually pull the trigger on that concept.
And it's been there for four years approximately? Has it, has the city gotten any rent from it or any income at all?
From, no, sir.
City-owned property? Okay. I guess some of my hesitations are, are the lack of public art, which we discussed a little bit in the last meeting. The lack of the shade structure. I went by and kind of walked out the space between the oak trees. And I feel like that, whether people are going to be told to leave or not, if they're there ordering food. I've never been told by lunas to, to leave. In fact, they provide seats at their outside takeout window. And it just seems like if this is, I agree, the building is, is, could be historic. It's, it's certainly got a lot of potential, but I'm not hearing much from the applicant that it's going to bring it back to that historic charm and value. It's more like it might be painted. Or, you know, the fridge is going to cover up the stuff in the back. I just didn't know if there was more certainty that could be done on, on bringing it up. But we have a motion and a, a second on the floor, so.
Well, I'll say from my part that, you know, I'm actually right now in my own business working on walk-in coolers. And so this is top of mind for me. The building itself, is the, is the, are the dimensions of the building 16 by 28? Or, or does the site plan with the 16 by 28 footprint include the future walk-in freezer that you were talking about?
It's, it's 450 square feet total. And it's, it's almost a square. I think, I thought it was in total, it was with the freezer on the back. I believe it's 20, 22 by 25 or something like that.
On your plan, you've got 16 by 28 and, as the proposed, and yeah, when I multiply that, it's about 448 square feet.
Okay, then.
So if you are going to be adding an attached walk-in refrigerator or freezer to the back, that will be, that will, that's going to make it deeper or longer, however. And I just don't see that reference on the plan. I do see, to the Commissioner's point about seating, I do see, and, you know, in the demonstration elevations that there is some, you know, like, it looks like a little bar stool type seating. Whether or not that's going to happen, I don't know.
Yeah, that's, that's primarily so people can kind of sit down while they're ordering and waiting for their takeout.
Right.
That's, that's what it's there for. You know, it, that's how it.
Sure. I guess my, I mean, from my perspective, you know, I've made some of my hesitation about this at the previous meeting clear that, you know, I know this is not quite conforming with our code and, and conversations that you and I have had, Mr. Breckbill, about since then, about this being sort of, maybe the idea was that it was sort of temporary, that it could be moved down in the future sometime, if and when this parcel could ever be developed, so that it wasn't like set in stone forever. And, but from, from what I'm seeing, you know, it's almost like the discussion we had a little earlier about the boat show. I don't deny, I don't question the value, the historic value of this building, especially after Ms. Luckhard's. especially after Ms. Lockhart's generous walkthrough of the history of the building and its builder. But it seems to me like the idea, you know, we want to, we want to preserve the building. It currently has been preserved and it's like, here's a place to put it, let's put it here. Without, I still just, you know, I mean, even to the parking calculations of, well, it's gonna be a restaurant, but there's also gonna be maybe a Stewart Scoot element again. Great ideas, but it just all seems kind of like, you know, nebulous and, you know, I mean, is there a parking, does Steph feel confident that if it were to be used both as a restaurant and a place where scooters are gonna be rented? You know, we had even talked about it maybe being a, like, potentially becoming a business office for some time.
Let me, let me address a couple of those things. First of all, the site that we're actually, the reason that there was, there was a lot of thought given to the site because that is the site that it was originally supposed to go to. It was supposed to be moved across the street, right? So that was the original site, exactly where we're putting it. What, what happened is-
When it was, when it was originally rescued from-
Yes.
The triangle.
And it had to be moved within sixty days. So we had that site, I had secured the site with the owner of the building, that now One Eleven Real Estate Holding Zones, the two fifteen building. And that had been arranged. After we committed to move it and within that sixty days, he backed out of that land lease. And so, and because we were in a rush to keep the building from being destroyed, you know, there were parts moving while we were trying to finish everything. So that's when we were originally gonna move it downtown. We were gonna put it next to, down off Haney Circle, where the Geary family owned a place. We were gonna put it near the Blue Door, which we believe was also constructed by Fred Walton. And we were gonna try to put it in there because it's a small building. For a number of reasons, those also fell through. And that's why we ended up on Decker, what was supposed to be a temporary basis until we found a place that we could put it. And as you know, in downtown Stewart, there's not a lot of extra property available. So when I acquired the building, the two fifteen building and that parking lot, it was immediately going back to where it was originally intended to go. So that was the logic behind that. Relative to some of these other things, my only point there is I don't know that there's any intent to do any of that immediately. And of course, it would require somebody to come and, and ask for, you know, a change. But what I was trying to make the point is that that building is functional as a takeout restaurant, but it's also functional for other uses if need be. It just doesn't go away if somebody doesn't successfully run a restaurant there. It's been used as a hair salon, a financial planning office. There's a lot of uses for it that could be done with it. So I just wanted to make the point that it's an economic reuse of historical property. And I think that's a win-win. If we can get an economic benefit out of it and, you know, at the same time, save that historic structure and get it back to as much as possible what it looked like, I think it's good for everybody.
Yes, sir. I, I guess I'm just trying to be very clear with, you know, let's say, say the parking calculations.
I can answer that question. So currently, twenty-five are being used by Stewart Arches.
Right.
The two for the historic building. There's an additional fourteen spaces. So if Mark needs to have extra spaces for different use, there is additional spaces.
So the three-
Unaccounted for.
Yeah, I want to make sure that this is, that this is tight enough that right now it's, we've got three spaces required based on the square footage of the use of it as a walk-up restaurant space. Less one, less one because of the historic reuse. That if, if it were to fall, if the business were to fall through or whatever and it wanted to become a, an office or a beauty salon again, say, that it would need to come back to staff to commission for, and that those spaces would have to be encumbered, those additional spaces remaining.
It would, it would come back as a major urban code conditional use, just as this is, to approve the new use with parking spaces.
So the, what is being voted on right now is the use as a takeout restaurant only?
That's correct.
And I would mention that's, that's probably the most intense use. Retail restaurant is probably the most intense use you could have on that property. So anything else I would put there would probably require less parking.
Right.
Mr. Mark, this is your building. You're bringing it over there. And then what do you do then? You give it to her, she gets the permits?
No, no, no. We're gonna put it in place, just like with a lot of commercial buildings. She'll, she'll be responsible for build out inside.
And what about the outside?
No, we'll take care of that.
Looks horrible.
Yeah, we'll, we'll take care of that. That's, that'll all be part of what we're doing. We'll, we'll move it, we'll take care of making sure that it's, it's on its solid base, that the outside has been redone. If there's any restuccoing necessary, we'll take care of all of that. We're gonna repaint it and, and go from that, so we'll replace the windows, replace the door.
Because I went over there, what about that old, that old stove in there? That old gas stove, it's huge, it takes up half the building and that of it.
There's, all of that stuff in there is gonna be moved out. I don't think she has a need for any of that. She's not doing anything. In fact, it was almost, if it weren't for the fact that I think she's probably gonna have some french fries, I'm not even sure we have the need for a grease trap. But, you know, we're gonna put one in there just to be, just to be-
That's Mark Rogalino for you. He'll make you put one in, he made me put one in. And even though we never had a fryer. I want to be clear with Steph too, that with the proposed site plan that we have, you know, again, the sixteen by twenty-eight, I know what it's like to have to put in a walk-in refrigerator unit. It's gonna increase the footprint. And so, I mean, even the pad, even the foundation drawings here, don't, they're sixteen by twenty-eight. So is there gonna be enough room for right-of-way?
I think it adds three feet to the back of the building. So there's plenty of room to get by and a plenty of room for parking because we've, you know, we've got-
I'd like to have Steph be able to-
Well, yeah, not having seen the extent of the refrigerator on the back, it's, it's difficult to, you know, give an overview now.
But you'll have to review that, I suppose, right? I mean, it wouldn't be able to be built without some sort of staff review, code review, yeah.
And then did Commissioner McDonald, did you say if it doesn't work out, it's gotta be out there in so many months? What did you say?
I said they, they had to have the permit to move it within ninety days. And if it has not been moved onto the site by September, and was it the end of September?
September 1.
Twenty-one, that the city manager would have the authority to dispose of the building.
A year to move it from where it's at to here?
Yeah.
He's got one year to move it.
That was the request of the city manager.
I think that's too long.
Well, he, he said he wants to do it much sooner, so.
Can you, Mark, can you?
Oh, yeah, I have to. I got too much money tied up in it.
I've still got just, is the shade structure on the table? Is the artwork on the table? I've heard two things now. Is the building being repainted, yes or no? New windows, is there a list of what, what's gonna be done to the building?
Well, we've got to bring it up to code. So you can't have a building without windows, without doors. So we're gonna, you know, we're gonna have to put windows and doors on it. I would assume probably, you know, we're gonna have to have some sort of hurricane window, hurricane window on them. And we've got to fix it up. You know, I'm gonna, to some degree, I've got to, I want to talk to the tenant, see if there's any additional things that they need there. But it, we still have to, we're asking for the permit to move it. We're still going to have to run it through on the final plans in terms of, you know, what we actually do there. And the, and the city's got to sign off on it to give us a CO.
You're restoring the building as well as moving it, correct?
Right, exactly, that's exactly right. So, and relative to the public art, it's, it's three hundred bucks, I don't care. I'll put public art on, I don't, it doesn't bother me for that. But, and what I would like to do is I have a sailfish marker that is, that my family purchased as part of the historical sail, the historic sailfish marker tour. And I'd like to get Stewart Main Street to modify that, to add this building there. I had it modified originally to include the Victorian house because it wasn't originally included. So I'm gonna ask them to modify it to include that, that onto that marker. So it'll become part of that, that tour, that historic marker tour.
So the public art would be a modified existing language, is that?
Yes, or, or, I mean, again, we're talking three hundred dollars. I, I don't care what, if you guys want something else, I'll put something else. My thought was that's functional and I'd like to do that, but whatever you guys, whatever you guys want.
Okay, thank you, Mark.
Uh, yeah, I, I guess, is there any further discussion before we try to call the vote? Is there any, is there any public comment on this item?
No, all I'd like to say, and I, I didn't want, I don't want to stall this. I think I want to go forward, but one of the big issues that we've come up with is our ordinance, which demarcates historic buildings, what happens with them? What is a historic building? And when we have situations like this where something to me has been recognized by the city at some point in the past and then somebody's trying to save it on their own, even when the city themselves have recognized it and we're trying to do something, I, I think that, I know that there are difficulties with the, with the property and, which is why he's coming in on, on this way. But this building has been in that area, in that location, around that general location within four or five or six buildings, half a mile, quarter mile, for what, I don't know, over eighty years or more. And it's, I just, I just want to make sure that we, whatever we're doing and that I hope that Mr. Breckball can meet the timeline that we're, we're saying that we want to put in here and that we can have something done because people have tried to save this building and he's had it sitting there on the property while we've had it on the, on the Decker Avenue area there. And I just think we, I just, I just want to see it go forward and get something done with it.
Thank you, Commissioner or Vice Mayor. Yes, public comment?
Yes, thank you. I'm Robin Hicks Dunley for the record. And I wanted to share this with you because I'm not sure that, doesn't sound like maybe you're familiar with it. But in nineteen ninety-one, the city of Stewart conducted a historical architectural review and a survey. There were two hundred and seventy-seven buildings added to the survey. And this one's number forty-two. So in two thousand and fifteen, when the city granted a demolition permit to the developer, they actually granted a permit to demolish their own historic building. And had Mark not stepped up and moved the building, you would have had to deal with the embarrassment of demolishing one of your own historic buildings. So I think what he's done is fabulous. He spent his own money to move that building. And to Commissioner Matheson's point, there have been a number of proposals before the commission that would have generated money, even including giving the building back to the city for adaptive reuse. So there were plenty of opportunities for that. This is a great opportunity now. And I hope you'll do the right thing and correct the wrong that was done in two thousand and fifteen and save the building. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Dunley. Are there any comments online? Yes, it's important to save our historic buildings, but we also have to think about where they're going too. And, you know, there's a right place for certain place, certain buildings. I guess, Ms. Kendall, will you call the roll, please?
No.
Commissioner McDonald?
Yes.
Commissioner Brunner?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Clark?
Yes.
Mayor Meyer?
No. Motion carries three to two. Commissioner Matheson and Mayor Meyer dissenting. Moving on to item number fourteen, charter amendments. Mr. Ordinance first reading, Mr. Mortel?
I may have to, I'm looking, it's coming back, I've lost my screen.
This is ordinance number twenty-four fifty-one dash twenty-twenty, an ordinance of the city of Stewart, Florida, amending the Stewart City Charter, Part One, Article Seven, to amend Section seven point zero-three, qualification for office, Section seven point zero-five, schedule and chapter fourteen, elections, Article Two, candidates amending Section fourteen dash twenty-five, commencement of terms of office of elected candidates of the Code of Ordinances, providing for appeal of conflicting ordinance, providing for severability, providing for codification and providing for an effective date and for other purposes. How did I do?
Better than I could have.
Okay.
You're saving my voice so that I could actually do the agenda item.
This is, is this Mr.?
It's actually, I'm gonna handle it.
Yes.
So as you all know, the Charter Review Board made some recommendations and you as a commission voted to essentially have two referendum items, both of which passed, one close, but they both passed. And as a result, created mandates for me to present to you the amendments to implement them into law. So the first one was related to term limits and terms. So it was pretty easy to change the terms from two years to four years. However, because the way the commission is right now, elections take place in odd years and even years, what needs to happen is it has to transition to odd years. I checked everywhere else in the state and found that what they do to transition to odd years is the odd, or even years, is the odd-year election cycle, which in this case is groups two and four, whose election will be coming up in twenty-one. Their first term is a three-year term. That would bring them to twenty-four. And then following that, it would be four-year terms, twenty-four, twenty-eight, thirty-two, thirty-six, et cetera. So that part was pretty easy. Then the mandate was also to afford twelve-year term limits to everyone. So in order to make it fair, it's kind of a bifurcated ordinance. What I did was I said, okay, groups one, three, and five actually had an election this year. And this term of election was not in this ordinance. So I felt to make their full twelve years reflect the vote, the best thing to do would be have group one, three, and five's twelve-year terms start at its next election in, which would be twenty twenty-two. As it related to groups two and four, because its next election was actually gonna be this three-year or part of this ordinance, it made sense that its election start in twenty twenty-one and start twelve years fully from there. As a result, the completion of their current term or this year would not count toward term limits, just as the completion of groups one, three, and five's current term would not apply. Then the second matter that I handled was the intention of the Charter Review Board that no current sitting city commissioner would be allowed to actively run for another office. So that kind of got narrowed down in reviewing it to two things that are active running. Number one, registering to run for another office is clear. And number two, opening up a bank account and collecting money. So the idea that someone might say, well, you know what, I want to be president of the United States one day, that is not actively running for another office. Going to the bank and opening up a bank account so that people can make donations for your presidential campaign is in fact actively running for another office. And so the, the two kind of requirements would be obviously registering it and the other one would be opening up or accepting funds. Any questions?
Thank you, Mr. Mortel.
I'll move for approval.
Second.
I have a motion by Commissioner McDonald and a second by Vice Mayor Clark. Are there any questions before we call the, seeing none? Are there any, is there any public comment? Any online, please raise your hand or star nine. Seeing none? Ms. Kendall, will you call the roll, please?
Commissioner McDonald?
Yes.
Commissioner Matheson?
Yes.
Commissioner Brunner?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Clark?
Yes.
Mayor Meyer?
Yes, motion carries unanimously. Moving on to item number fifteen, amendments to City Code, Chapter Two, Administration.
This is ordinance number twenty-four fifty dash twenty-twenty, an ordinance of the city of Stewart, Florida, amending the Stewart City Code, Chapter Two, Administration, Article One in general, to create Section two dash two, administrative lean search and report fee, amending Article Two through Article Four, providing for severability of the parts hereof, providing for reading by title only and providing for an effective date.
Thank you, Mr. Mortel.
And I think the city-
Mr. Dias?
Yes, sir, so there are multiple changes throughout this Chapter Two item, most of, most of which are either staff recommended changes to comply with what we actually currently do do, like having electronic agendas versus paper agendas. And then all of the remaining recommendations that the Charter Review Board had recommended that didn't fit in the Charter, but rather fit in the administrative code. There's a plethora of changes in there. If you have anything specific that you would like to me to address, I'd be happy to.
Yes, Commissioner Brunner?
I just wanted to say, I thought it was a smart idea, whoever it was, to do the second readings first and then the first reading second.
I agree.
It was, I mean, I, wow, and I think of that. Anyway, that was smart, that's it.
Mr. Mayor, I had one question, I'd, looking for maybe some feedback on my fellow commissioners. Page eight, Section two dash eighty-four, you know, B, where no elected official can serve on an advisory board. I can look at that both ways because I have served on an advisory board and now I'm an elected official and I can see the potential conflict. But I can also see the great advantage when someone with knowledge of different industries can give that on their particular board, whether it's someone serving as a traffic analyst or someone who has knowledge of school systems. or someone who has knowledge of school systems. You know, all the advisory board members are, are there in a voluntary basis to reflect their specific knowledge as city residents, and what they bring to the table is valuable. And I, I can see both sides of it, but I also, at the end of the day, for me, I don't know if that one is certainty because at the end of the day, it's just a voluntary advisory board, and we are the elected officials that make the ultimate decision. So if we do disagree, you know, they're volunteering their time, and I've had to pick numerous different, you know, advisors, and i- it's not necessarily easy to, to find someone who has, who puts in the time and, and heart to do it. And there can be an advantage for someone having unique knowledge.
Mr. Mayor, that was one of the, that was one of the recommendations by the Charter Review Board, and I think the general consensus, and Mr. Mortel can correct me if I'm wrong, was that, um, a concern of an elected official placating to a group rather than looking out for the best interests of the city.
Okay.
Yes.
Do you have any, I mean, I, you know, I'm, I'm looking at both sides of this issue, and I'm trying to figure it out. I'm open to hearing other commissioners' comments if they have any on this one.
Um, well, well, let, I guess, yeah, let's kind of dig into that. I agree with you about, um, there being a potential for, well, I don't, I want, I don't want to exclude anybody that would be a great asset to our volunteer boards that just so happens to serve on another advisory board. Maybe we could be a little more clear. I understand also what the, what the, um, committee had recommended based on some of the people that we have on our existing advisory boards. Maybe it would be a s- a specific, um, you know, uh, exception for, or application for those who are elected of, elected officials in a, in some other capacity, a publicly elected official.
If I can provide a little insight, I mean, here's the thing. What, what happened is that we've had some, like you said, some members of our boards that are long-serving that actually have done impeccable jobs on our voluntary board systems. During the Charter Review process, there was a high-profile agenda item that members of the LPA, you could tell, were being affected by the impact of the public influence that was being present. Whether that matters or not, it's an advisory board, that's you guys as a discretion to address that by your appointments or otherwise. As the city manager correctly points out, it was raised by the Charter Review Board in a specific request for him to bring it forward for the commission to review. Mr. Cam Penny happens to be in the audience, and, um, with Mrs. McBride as well was on the board, so both of them are here, and Mr. Quazo, I didn't see him behind that mask, and Mr. Capress. We have, we have almost a quorum, we could call a meeting right now. But they're here and probably could give you guys some insight on the issue. I mean, because they're the ones that talked about it.
Please, please, Mr. Cam Penny. And first of all, thank you for serving us aboard.
Thank all of you.
We all did a great, I, I have to say, that's one of the most pleasant boards I've ever served on. I just want to say that the reason this came up is because over the years, not only have we had other elected officials who really voted on matters that would affect their elected positions.
Right.
But also appointed people who worked for other agencies, and at times, they would have to recuse themselves. I mean, we've been here where you had three and four people having to recuse themselves. So that's the whole gist behind it. Not that they're not good people, not that they're not this. It's just that they may not be serving the interest of the city. And even if they, they are, it's perception. And we were trying to get rid of perception.
Thank you, sir. So I still, I, I still do, um, think that, and I agree, you know, a couple examples come to mind. Certainly, an elected official serving in another capacity on another board could be, let's say, compromised, make decision, political decisions and in the, in their capacity as an advisory board member. But I'm trying to preserve the ability for, let's say, somebody that would be on, you know, the CRB or LPA that also serves on a board, you know, for, um, the, the county, you know, Housing Authority, or I think there, there are some unelected board appointments that I wouldn't want to miss out on somebody that, that might be able to learn from other boards or see what other thing, what other boards out there are doing, and, and that kind of expertise I wouldn't want to lose. I just don't want this to be too heavy-handed. Maybe we can include something that.
Well, and those, in that example, those are appointed positions, not elected positions, like the other, other boards you were just speaking about, which this does not prohibit that. This is specifically for an elected official.
And are you talking, the limitation? I, I read the language of, if you're talking about limiting people serving on multiple boards, was, I interpreted it as only city boards, so they could still serve on a county board.
We don't represent the county.
Yeah, so, but, but, uh, someone, and a volunteer can't serve on the LPA and the CR, CRB.
You, you currently, the way this is written, Mr. Flanagan, who's a resident of the City of Stewart, sits on the county LPA board.
Right.
And could sit on one of our boards.
Okay.
Okay, I just want to make sure, because it, I mean, in this, in the heading of Section B, it says, "Membership on More Than One Standing Board Prohibited."
But that's city boards, that's the way I interpreted it.
That's the way our city boards are now.
Okay.
With the exception, I think, of the SARB, and the, there was one other one.
SARB is the only one that allows two board seating.
So, because that's the requirement of that board's bylaws. So the main, the main meat of this really is just no elected official may serve on any board, essentially.
Yes.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor?
Yep.
And I can't seem to remember what section it was in, but it's on the same topic. I believe there was a, is it an eight-year term limit for people serving on?
Yes, eight consecutive years.
Yeah, so I have a problem with that for two reasons. One is, uh, we're giving commissioners twelve years, and it, so if you want to have someone appointed to a board that's doing a good job, and they, and you appoint them your first year, and they continue on for twelve years, I, you know, after eight years, you have to say no thank you to your service. These are volunteer positions. And, and quite frankly, I think we've all learned, and I know I've learned, that it's hard to find people that are, that will take the time to do the work for free as a volunteer for some of these boards. And when you get somebody good, I don't want to tell them to, to, you know, that is willing to take all these years and put, and serve on it and take that institutional knowledge and get rid of it. So I think that that is, uh, something. I do like the ability, the, the change to terms to one year and allow us to, uh, make the changes every year because for the same reason, if someone is not doing the job that you, oh, that you'd like to do, then you have a bite at the apple to, if they're not showing up. There could be lots of reasons why. But it gives you a bite at the apple every year to make those changes. I would, I would almost consider eliminating the term limit altogether because I think it's the prerogative of the commissioner. I know that, uh, generally, when any one of us leaves office, there are new appointees. I'm guessing you put new appointees in, and you put different appointees in when you guys came in two years ago. So I think that term limit corrects itself. But, uh, and again, we've had some great, great volunteers over the years, and I'd hate to just sit there and say, well, thanks for all the great work, sorry, we don't like you anymore, so.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
So that is a, that is a term limit per board, so they could go to a, to a different board. And this was another recommendation by the Charter Review Committee, and the reason behind it, the eight years, was the Charter Review Committee recommended eight years for commissioners. So it lined up with the commissioner, and then ended up changing to a twelve-year term.
So I would, at least the minimum, I would like to change it to at least be twelve years, but, uh, commensary with the new commission twelve-year terms.
I, I would agree with lining it up with the commission terms. You know, the original discussion on commission term limits was eight years, and we changed that to twelve.
Yeah, but their, their potential term is just four years. It's, we don't have to be elected for twelve years or eight years.
But it's the maximum, would be twelve, just like our maximum consecutive would be twelve. Uh, maybe Mr. Cam Penny can give us some.
Really, it wasn't really so much for the commission's appointments, it were for the at-large appointments. And what we're doing in effect is stopping people from volunteering because we do have a list of people who want to be on boards, but we just don't have opportunity for them. So actually, that wasn't really for your appointments, it was for the at-large appointments.
Thank you, Mr. Cam Penny.
Perhaps language could be added for the at-large appointment.
I would agree, I'd be okay, if that was the intent, I would be okay with that. And, uh, but the question is, is it, eight, I guess, is, uh, eight years is fine, but, you know, I just wonder if we should have it, you know, I don't know, so.
If, if it's specific to the at-large, then I, I don't see the need for it to be tied to the commission terms. Um, again, for, for, for the commission appointees, my big push on commission term limits would encompass the board's turnover, really, the advisory board's turnover as the commission turns over.
In, in participating in the drafting of this, I do have to tell you guys that one of the things that I considered when we were, we're doing this is, you know, nobody signs up on the board and says, I'm going to be serving fourteen years from now. I mean, it just doesn't happen. But at the same time, if you asked me to be on a board and you said, listen, everybody else on the board can do it at their leisure as long as they want, but you, because of the position you're accepting, have a different structure. So I was trying not to treat the at-large people differently than the other board members, just from a mere point of why. But obviously, you can, and they are different to the extent that they're at-large rather than appointed by commissioners. But that was also because they fell into that. What really happened is the original board was seven people, and all seven used to fill out applications and come before the commission, and the commission would literally vote on each position, and it was a majority of the commission rules, so the majority got to put the whole board together. And then it changed in roughly two thousand and eight to a commissioner within, each individual commissioner would appoint somebody, but there were only five commissioners, so there was seven board members. So what they said is, okay, these five arbitrarily have commissioners, these two extras are going to be called at-large, and they have no restrictions. They're, you know, not, there is nobody, so to speak, saying.
To replace them, yeah.
Well, I, I think that, that, that change is, is significant, and it's good. And also, I think with regard to the independent, uh, review board, the fact that they, um, it says to be a current resident versus having employment, um, in the city, I think that that's also significant for the independent review board. So I agree with, with those changes.
Okay, so just to clarify, um, as far as the board, uh, term limits, it sounds like their consensus is that we want to make it mirror the commission term length for twelve years.
Twelve years, yeah.
And, and also have, uh, language in there that it would be, um, specifically related to those at-large members or just in general?
Well, did you want to, if we're only talking about at-large, did you want to leave it to eight? Which was the original language and recommendation? Or do you want to go to twelve?
I, I mean, it seems to me that, you know, since we decided to go with twelve years for the commission, just to keep it.
Consistent.
Consistent, that makes sense.
I'm fine with either, but I think consistent is better.
Yeah.
Who, who, who let them?
I don't think there's a motion at all.
I don't think we have a motion just yet.
Then we're not getting any i- inspired turnover for the at-large positions, which it sounds like that was the, the advisory board's
Get rid of it.
desire, is to have those at-large positions turn over a little more. But if they're going to be reviewed, there's also language in there that they're reviewed every two years.
Right.
Yeah, every year.
Every year now.
Every year.
The terms are down to one.
Even the at-large positions, okay.
Well, what happens is, there's a city commission meeting that's called a reorg meeting every year. We're going to probably, depending on the bylaws, it's probably going to be immediately following the election. So maybe in September, there'd be a appointment to do, up to voluntary boards. Those would be just ratifying the commissioners' board appointments. In theory, the at-large positions would be reviewed, but I don't think anybody's ever said the at-large people did a bad job. They're going to get a good review. No one's, no one's saying they're working poorly at it. I mean, they, they aren't, they work hard.
But we could also have, at that point, we could advertise those at-large positions, and, uh, and we could see the applicants and make a decision.
So they expire.
What's that?
So their positions expire.
Right, yeah, on an annual basis, if we're doing one-year appointments, so.
Okay, I mean, that, that's fine, but that means that if they don't fill out another application, there's a vacancy.
Right.
Right, but I mean, that's fine, too, that's just different than we wrote it. But that's fine.
There wasn't the incentive at large.
Now, instead of term limits, they have.
One year.
One-year term.
One-year.
Yes.
I, I'm kind of leaning towards we stick with what the advisory board suggested. I mean, that, we just heard the intent seemed to be for the at-large positions. If they have term limits that are eight-year term limits, that's going to inspire some turnover. But it's not going to be drastic. There's an advantage to having someone serve two, three years on the board, but, but twelve years is, is getting a little long. That's why we have, we all agreed on twelve-year term, but.
Yes, Vice Mayor?
Hi, this is going towards the, um, city attorney. This, this has nothing to do with our boards, per se, but every year or every so often, we have to reappoint as a city commission for Florida statutes the persons who serve on the Stewart Housing Authority. We just deal with that on the statutory, we don't include any, any language in here at this time?
It's in here.
Yeah, oh, we did have that in there, I must have missed it then because that's what I was looking for. All right, okay, as long as it's take, as long as I know that it's, it's covered and we're doing it the way that we've done it because of the statute, okay.
Are there any other, um, items that came to mind? I, I did, I did notice that, um, we had, like Steph had talked about before, like you have brought up before, Vice Mayor, the second Monday, the second regular, or the first regular city commission meeting the second Monday, that it would begin early so that we could have four o'clock, I believe, so we could have our proclamations and staff appreciation and all those things before the business meeting at five-thirty, which I think is great.
I forgot about that.
Yeah.
I, I like that addition. And if, if, after hearing the discussion, I'd make a motion to approve Resolution twenty-four fifty-dash twenty-twenty as written.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second, motion.
One second, would you like a modification to that part, making it clear that the term limit is only for the at-large position?
Yes, and.
It doesn't read correctly right now, so.
It's, oh, yeah. At-large position and proactive, meaning moving forward from, from now, it's not retroactive if someone has served for.
Well, there is, there is, it's another sentence there that basically eliminates the, um, at, current at-large positions as of October twenty-twenty-two, where they, where they start rotating off the current ones because they've, I think they've been there.
All of the at-large have been there over eight years.
Well, our term limits are proactive. They're not taking into account anyone's history on the term, so. I would amend my motion to, to, to make, if we're talking about, to, to change the language so that those term limits move forward. You know, if this is approved, they would, the clock would start ticking now.
I agree.
And that's only for the at-large and the, but the commissioner appointees And that's only for the at-large and the, but the commissioner appointees will be 12-year terms?
Commissioner appointees are year to year.
Okay. But they, but they have a maximum, do they have a maximum term limit?
No.
No, okay.
And then what about, did you guys, you made some comments about the elected official. Is that, that's now excluded from the motion?
That was as.
It was clarified.
Remains.
Okay.
I would like, so I have a motion by Commissioner Matheson and a second by Vice Mayor. I would like to address the reduction in time for public comment. I think the county gives three minutes. I, I mean, I know as well as you all that sometimes it's not nice sitting up here and having everybody, yeah, let you for five minutes and then five minutes and then five minutes. But I've always felt proud that we offered a generous public comment.
I'm willing to amend my motion for that.
I have a question about the public comment now that you bring it up.
Sure. I think that should, in my opinion, I've never served as mayor, but I think that should be a little bit of a discrepancy, depending on the mayor.
It's not just the county that does the three minutes.
Three minutes is kind of widespread. I mean, the reality is, you could, you can allow them to speak for 10 minutes, that, like you said, the mayor's running the meeting. But you can't cut them off before five right now, or you're actually violating the code. So if you had 100 people, they all get five minutes.
Yes. Commissioner?
Yeah. The only thing, and Mike, you put this in there and you put the language in there regarding regulating content, so to speak, especially during the election cycle. And also directing stuff that just, you know, I like, you know, one part of me likes that, but part of me worries that are, are we restricting someone's free speech? I mean, again, like the mayor said, it's not pleasant when someone directs anger towards us, but.
That came as kind of a cumulative effect of full discussions, but the county ran into that Channel 20, became a television thing, and people were watching the television. So people started showing up with T-shirts on and doing their public comment to actually, they didn't care about the agenda items. They just wanted to promote whoever was running for office. So the intention here is to take politics out of it. If you want to come give a public comment, you're welcome to do that, but let's not have this be a time that people are running for office.
There is no constitutional issue with doing that.
There isn't.
Okay. That's what I was concerned about. I want to make sure that we were not stepping on grounds of people's First Amendment rights. And so, okay, I'm fine with it then.
I appreciate what you, we do need to protect that. There, I did attend a workshop, a public comment workshop, managing workshop at the Florida League of Cities last year. And it was all about how you have to balance, you know, free speech rights with, you know, what you're, how you want to maintain order in the meeting. And, you know, specifically here, saying anger, rudeness, ridicule, obscene and profane language, impatience and lack of respect are not acceptable behavior, and that the mayor is responsible for maintaining order, and that could constitute a forfeiture of right to speak. That, I think, according to what I've seen, is that there are, there are certain speeches protection unless it rises to fighting words, open threats, calls to violence, and so on, and, you know, I guess profanity in a certain way. So I don't know if, I mean, I guess it leaves it up to the mayor to be able to say, if you're being angry, I'm going to stop your time. But is that risky?
It can be regulated by the government for time, place, and manner. The question is, just like a public rally, regardless of the content, if it's going to be disruptive to the community, the government has the right to give them a permit and set the time, place, and manner. This falls under that same category. It's unfortunately on the fly.
Right.
You're doing it because you have to make the call as the mayor.
Okay. I just don't want us to run afoul of, like you said, Commissioner, run afoul of any constitutional free speech issues. Are there any other?
Yes.
The timing of coming at four. You know, if you're running from work and have to take a shower and get dressed and all that, so that might be 3:00, 3:30, and you don't eat. Are we going to have dinner here? Here till 11?
Well, the idea would be that it's going to, no, no, it's going to move.
There's been times where we've been here till 10.
Sure. But the idea, I believe.
Work here, don't get dinner.
The idea is to move.
Can I carry my lunch?
The idea, I believe, is to move the meeting up so that, because, you know, in the past, we've spent the first hour and a half with proclamations. And, you know, it's nice stuff, but it's the fluffy stuff before the business meeting. So this would be starting the day earlier. Hopefully, the day ends earlier as well.
So we don't stop at 4:30 and wait around until 5:30?
We do.
Well, we would.
Do you think four is the right, is it four starting? Maybe 4:30 is the right time to start. Give it an hour.
Yeah, 4:30.
Originally, when we picked four o'clock, it also included commissioner comments, because commissioner comments, a lot of times, are directions to staff and other purposes. And so if it included the commissioner comments, four o'clock would be absolutely necessary, because the time in commissioner comments sometimes gets lengthy. But that's up to you guys.
I know there's times.
I'm good either way.
If it doesn't work, I think we can change it.
And is, would this, is the reasoning is to try to help us get out earlier?
That's the idea. And also for, you know, for the benefit of the public, to know that not everybody wants to come here and hear the proclamations and have the arts moment.
See all the people sitting out there? They're waiting.
They're waiting, they're waiting for, they're waiting for items. Right. Yeah, they have to wait for the items for a long, long time.
Can we make, can we do it so that we have those items with developers come up?
Well, then we would have the arts moment at 10 o'clock at night, and so those kids from 10th Street would have to wait.
Well, the arts moment is two minutes, three minutes.
Well, I'll go along with Mr. Commissioner Matheson. Let's try it out. Okay. All right.
So.
I might sneak a donut or something.
Stick with four.
This is a move to get rid of the arts moment.
Stick with four o'clock.
I've suggested it.
It's not, it's not the arts moment alone. It's a proclamation for Hunger Week. It's, it's, any individual item is really not that big, but when you start putting them all together, they add up.
Proclamations, presentations, employee recognitions, employee of the month. Yeah. Let's just say, we want to go ahead with four o'clock.
Try it, and if.
Yeah.
And that way, if we have a little time between, you can go, we can all have a bite to eat.
Right. Okay.
There's a new hot dog place.
Are there any other, so.
Right.
Are there any other items for discussion on the, it's a lot. So, you know, it's okay, we're taking this time. We're amending the code.
Okay.
Are there any other ideas? How do we feel about the three versus five minutes for public comment?
I'm the only one who hasn't sat as mayor, so I would leave it open to the other four to discuss that.
I'm with the three. I've, as mayor, I sure, you know, had one meeting with over 450 people here. And I don't know how many members of public comment on a noise ordinance. And for a motion that was giving them, everybody exactly what they wanted, the vast majority of people who wanted, we had 75 people, maybe 100 people that made, we had three and a half, four hours of public comment for a motion that was made in the first five minutes of the meeting, of the item. And it was just long. And then the same with the, when we did the fire assessment fee, several hundred people here. And it was, and, you know, and because it's on the same subject matter, you do hear the same thing over and over again, which is, but, which is fine, because people are consistent. But it can, it can drag the meeting out so long. And even such as, I'll give you an example, the fire assessment fee hearing, we had lots of public comment on the issue. There was one person that was removed from the room during that time because of bad behavior. So we also had one of the longest-serving former city commissioners, Charlie Foster. He, I gave him a little additional time out of respect for his vast experience with the city and, and everything. So in his age and everything else. So you have the ability to move, you know, when it's a night like here and there's not many people here, give them an extra couple of minutes. But when you have.
Okay. Basis of three.
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay.
Did you change anything in your motion, Mr. Matheson, that I?
I'd like, I maintain the motion as it was stated, maintaining the three minutes for public comment.
I'll read the vote.
So Ms. Kendall, are you all right with all that?
Yes, I am.
Okay. Is there any public comment? Okay. Let's.
Hello?
Hello?
Oh, yeah. Hi. Karen Hall, Yost Ridge, 1701 Southwest Palm City Road. I'm disappointed about going to three minutes. My goodness, sometimes people need five minutes. We're all getting paid when we're commissioners. I just, I'm sorry to hear that you would do that. When you think about moving the meeting up, that takes away from the people that do want to see the fluff and they do want to see the arts moment. And they can't get home to start dinner for their kids till 5:00, 5:30. They can actually watch this stuff. And maybe right now, fluff is what the people might need. The arts moment is so nice. Hearing our commissioners, what they think about, we like those comments. Why should we put all that off because there's business and people that are spending money? Too bad. The commission meetings are also for the public. So yes, let's not move them too far. Let's have the fluff for those of us out here that want to see that nice stuff. Also, we got these term limits. Well, what about the city attorney? Are we going to put 12 years on that? I know that right now, our city attorney, we voted him out as a commissioner, but now he's here for a long time. Do the people, do the people want to put term limits on the attorney as well as the commissioners? It's just a question I'm asking. Anyway, thank you all for your service.
Thank you very much. Duly noted.
Mike, your term of limits every time you get three votes.
I have a term limit of one-year contract.
Let's move on to the next comment. Okay. Okay. Ms. Kendall, will you call the roll, please?
Commissioner Matheson?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Clark?
Yes.
Commissioner Bruner?
Yes.
Commissioner McDonald?
Yes.
Mayor Meyer?
Yes. Motion carries unanimously.
We'll be bringing this back for second reading in case you have other thoughts between.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Mortel. Okay. Moving on to ordinance, second reading. This is number 16, Bridgeview Residential Plan Unit Development. This is also quasi-judicial. Mr. Mortel?
This is ordinance number 2437-2020. An ordinance of the City Commission of the City of Stewart, Florida, amending the future land use map of the city's comprehensive plan, thereby changing the future land use designation from commercial office residential to multifamily density residential for a 15.88 acre parcel annexed by ordinance number 2415-2019, owned by Atlantic Realty Partners, Inc., and located on the northwest corner of State Road 76, also known as Canter Highway and Southwest Martin Highway. Said land being more fully described in Exhibit A attached, and further providing that said lands shall concurrently establish the Bridgeview Residential Planned Unit Development, or RPUD, consisting of 212 multifamily units within two four-story apartment buildings. Approving a development site plan, providing for development conditions and timetable for development, declaring the plan to be consistent with the city's comprehensive plan, providing directions to the city clerk, providing for repeal of all ordinances in conflict, providing for severability, providing for an effective date, and for other purposes.
Thank you, Mr. Mortel. Since first reading, do the commissioners have any ex parte communications to disclose? Commissioner Bruner?
No, no, I, no. I'm here with an open mind. I haven't spoken with anyone.
Commissioner Matheson?
I've only spoken with staff and residents. I'm here with an open mind.
Commissioner, can you go?
I spoke with staff and I think Marcel Campbell regarding this. And I'm here with an open mind.
We will ask the Vice Mayor when she returns. I have not spoken with anyone since first reading, and I am here with an open mind. Mr. Mortel, will you kindly swear in all those giving testimony?
If those giving testimony could please stand and raise your right hand. I don't know if anybody's online or not. I'm assuming no. Okay. So let the record reflect, five people are being sworn. You swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God. Let the record reflect all five testified affirmatively.
Thank you, Mr. Mortel. Mr. Mayor?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Stephen, Mayor, for the record, Development Department. This is a second reading of the ordinance. Would you care for me to go through the entire presentation?
I would ask that you highlight any changes, changes, if any. I don't need a review.
Okay. Thank you.
Well, I'll ask our Commissioner.
I was here for the presentation, so, and I only have one issue that I'm going to bring up, so.
I appreciate that. The only, the last time you've seen this item was in July. It went to the CEO and the other state agencies, and they have submitted to us a letter of no objection. And we, and staff has no update to the plans, for any of the plans or the ordinance. And so staff continues to recommend approval of the ordinance on second reading. The applicant is here for any questions, and staff also reserves this time for any questions you may have.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. McDonald, Commissioner.
I have, at the last meeting, when this was discussed, and again, I was out there, not here. Mr. Mayor, you brought up about the boardwalk and having some concerns about the boardwalk, and you wanted to leave it off for now. I would like to put that back in. I'm afraid if they have to come back in and do a modification of the PUD to put the boardwalk in, it's not going to happen. They're going to decide that that's an amenity that they don't need to do. And I really would like to see that amenity. I think it's, I think it'd be nice for the residents. And I think that they can do it properly, providing they get all the permits. So that would be what I would, what I'd like to see, if that's amenable to everybody else. Otherwise, I think the project is a pretty nice project. Are they going?
Okay.
So whatever your thoughts are on that.
My, I mean, I wasn't against the idea of a boardwalk.
No, I know. You wanted to wait till they, the environmental review was done and then come back and modify. And I want to, to me, that disincentivizes it being done. I'd like to see it put in, just put in all the protections that they have to meet before they can actually build it, because they're going to have to get all the, whatever it's DEP or South Florida, whoever all they have to get the permits from. But I just don't want them to have to come back and do a major modification of the PUD, because that just adds a whole bunch of extra steps and work. And it, so, and to me, that disincentivizes doing it.
I understand. I appreciate that. I, you know, I guess I'd like better clarification on, I mean, what sort of cost are we talking about to do, like the PUD amendment to the applicant? Aside from just the.
I think the question would be for your advisors.
It could be added as a condition that this would become a minor amendment to the PUD, which is a lower cost.
Do we have a, can someone pull up exactly what the cost would be? I mean, we're talking about wetlands here. You know, I don't want to disincentivize it to the point of it not happening, but I also don't want to completely, and I know that there are other regulatory agencies that, that, from whom permits would need to be pulled. But, you know, we, we just, I believe that we should be able to have a look at that as well. I mean, it's not hundreds of thousands of dollars.
No. I think it's, if it's a minor amendment, it's probably like.
Or the additional cost.
The cost of bringing in the.
And their professional team.
It's about $1,200 or $1,300, I think.
And direct fee cost to the city.
Yeah.
Yes.
And then, plus the additional time for their consultants and for their paid representatives and attorneys and all that. I understand that, coming to a meeting. Okay. I mean, is there a creative solution that reduces those costs or eliminates them or gives them the credit, or at least as far as the city is concerned?
First question is, do commission want to see this as it comes back through? If the commission doesn't want to see this as it comes back through, then it could be an administrative amendment subject to it meeting the criteria that commission set upon that, that it meets all the, that it's in the location or thereabouts that's described on the site plan, that it gains the state approvals as required for such a passive walkway. So at this meeting, the city commission could, in principle, agree to a boardwalk being installed in future, and that would be subject to state and local approvals as that came through, and it would be a minor amendment to the PUD.
Mr. Mayor, I don't have necessarily a problem with the boardwalk, but I see exactly where you're coming from. I don't know those, what the state is going to, how they're going to regulate the boardwalk. I know that we would have the authority to add regulations to it, but right now, we don't have any, anything coming before us.
Right.
And there's no real proposition of where it is, how wide it is. I don't know.
Well, there actually, there was a, it was on the. Well, there actually, there was a, it was on the original approval site plan, so it, it's dimensions, length, and everything. I know it was really long. That's why I remember the, that the dimensions were on it originally, because it was shown.
Yeah, it's on this plan that was on the, that's in the package.
I think the reason, I, I mean, unfortunately, I don't quite remember, but I think it was mentioned that, well, it wasn't, the design wasn't finalized.
Yeah, they think about it. May I, are we talking about the, the boardwalk?
Boardwalk going through the wetlands.
I apologize, but I, I'm glad that, that's what I wanted to know, what you were talking about.
Yeah, so, yes, sorry about that. So Commissioner McDonald made the point that perhaps we could remove, because I had asked at first reading that we have the applicant come back with a firmer design and the permits that they would have to get for the construction of the, of the boardwalk through the wetland. And Commissioner McDonald rightly pointed out that it could act as a disincentive, the additional cost of the PUD amendment, plus bringing their professionals back to show us that for another approval process.
We also can't conditionalize an approval on a state approval anyway. Like the state statutes don't allow us to conditionalize our approvals on gaining other state approvals. So they don't have to go do those first. That was happening before. They'd go spend all the money to get the approvals, and then the county would deny the application. And I'm not saying Martin County, I'm just saying historically throughout the state. And as a result, the, the Tallahassee passed a state statute that says a local government cannot conditionalize approval of a project on state agency approvals.
Well, I think Bridgewood would probably like that. I think that's how it was, you know? Yeah, that would be nice. That'd be very nice. But this would be, and like you said, all you have to go through, plus a horrible expense, I can imagine what that would be. So I'm okay with Commissioner McDonald.
Can I have some clarification from the applicant? Whether or not this was to be an amenity that was open to the public?
Yes, good evening, Troy Holloway with, with 2GHO. Open to the public, no, it's mainly going to be, as far as I know, meant just for amenity for the residents. And I think our site plan called out to be a six-foot raised boardwalk. And then just location of this is going to be dictated by, by government agencies, Durham. So, yeah, and it's going to be determined by the trees, or the trees are, and that's going to be in, be under the vegetation. And the biggest unknown right now is if we can get that fishing gazebo permitted, which is outside of the property line, but up on the rivers, on the edge of the river, so.
So if the fishing gazebo isn't permitted, it might not be likely that the boardwalk would be built at all? Is that the idea?
Um, I'm not sure. I mean, if we can, it, it's hard to say right now. I mean, we, we still, even if the board, even if we can't do gazebo, we'd love to be able to just take the boardwalk out to the edge of the water. I think it'd be a great, it's a great amenity for the, for the residents.
About no wider than six feet until you get to the potential gazebo. Wouldn't that be helpful for you, Mike?
Yeah, I suppose so. Is, is, is that clearly, is the staff confident that that could be like a clear condition, that no wider than six feet?
We can make that as part of a condition, sure.
And could, could we put as a, maybe this will help, as a condition, if you guys would put up and maintain some educational signage along regarding, you know, the river species?
Yeah, that was, that was planned, and we had, we had mentioned that as well at the last meeting, to have some interpretive signage up there, talking about the, you know, identifying the mangroves and types of wildlife and so on.
Maybe turn it into an educational experience for the residents?
Yeah, I, look, it's, it's, it's mostly, I like the idea overall, but I just, I feel like, you know, we are losing oversight over something that is, you know, we've fought hard to have, what, any development of wetlands, even if it's something, you know, minor like this, have commission oversight. And I would probably be more willing to allow it to be based just on the state review or, you know, the regional agencies review if it were open to the public. Having this be a purely private amenity that we, you know, are just ceding all oversight to state agencies for, I'm a little hesitant on that, but if it's the pleasure of the board, then I, I would ask for at least, yeah, that six-foot maximum width.
If I may?
Yeah.
I'll make a motion, and we'll see if, and if it works for you. If not, let me know, and we'll see if we can get there. Because I want to get to a compromise, because I appreciate you working on this one. I'll go ahead and move approval of the, of the resolution allowing the boardwalk maximum six-foot width until the, until you get to the, where the fishing gazebo would go, getting all required governmental, state, federal, whatever governmental approvals, and providing interpretive education materials along the boardwalk.
I'll second.
I would second for discussion. I have two more questions for the applicant.
Sorry, Commissioner Matheson, the, Commissioner Brunner beat you to the punch, but we'll still have discussion. So just to clarify for the record, we've got a motion by Commissioner McDonald and a second by Commissioner Brunner. Ms. Kendall, are you got that?
Thank you. Commissioner Matheson, I wanted to say something too. But the, the people, whoever's going to live there, I hope they'll know how, what a beautiful place that is, because Nike Kiplinger has donated all that land when you walk through there, back there and under the bridge. And I've been all back there, taking my grandkids and taking walks. So it's going to be a beautiful place, and we want you to make it a beautiful place, just awesome.
Commissioner Matheson, you had a question?
So I had a question for the applicant regarding bike storage, bicycles. If I was to purchase theirs, is there anywhere where I could store a bike besides my own apartment? A lot of people ride bikes here. There would be indoor bike storage, maybe besides a bike rack, is that?
I don't think there's any indoor, we have bike racks scattered throughout, but there's no indoor racks at this time. I mean, they can take them up into their apartment.
Okay, is that something you could factor in, maybe a, a location for that, or consider it? I, I'm just trying to think of the type of clientele that you'd be drawing here that, that might want to do that. And then the other thing was, if the language has been clarified between yourself and our city attorney regarding mimicking the city's use of non-toxic pesticides and herbicides in your PAMP for the, the area, has that, that was a condition of approval in the last motion where?
It still would be, but it wouldn't be until they have a PAMP.
Correct.
Okay.
We haven't done, we haven't done a PAMP yet.
That hasn't come out yet. Okay, so it still would be a condition of approval. Mr. McDonald, you made the motion, but would his motion have to include that condition?
The, the, the language, the, I don't know if it's off the top of my head right now in the ordinance, but if it isn't, we can, we need to include that we would agree on the language, which we won't have any problem. We're able to, we, I'm sure we can come to that conclusion.
If it was part of the conditions of the first reading, then I'm fine with that.
It's not. It needs, it's, I'm looking at Mr. Mayor, and he's telling you it didn't make the second reading.
I would like you to make the motion so that we can include that condition.
Okay, I'll include that provision.
And then as it relates to the, as it relates to the internal bike racks or bike storage, that's actually not, we're not coming back, so that needs to either be agreed on or not, because it's going to require redesign.
We're talking with the pesticides right now, right?
Yeah.
This is second reading.
The, the original motion was to approve it with the condition that their, their PAMP follows the same protocol, so to say, as the city of Stewart, which does not use toxic herbicides and pesticides.
That was in the motion at the first meeting. I don't, I, I don't remember that, but I'm sure that is. But again, I was down there and not up here, so.
So you've amended your motion to include that, correct?
No, amended just to, just to clarify that, that, that is what we want, so.
And then the second.
What was the provision?
That in their PAMP, they are not, that they would have to get approval with the language in the PAMP by the city attorney to make sure that it's the same as the city's regulations regarding pesticides, because right now the city does not use any toxic pesticides for removal of weeds, et cetera, in its ordinance. But that's subject to modification over time. So the PAMP would have to reflect what the city's reflection is when the PAMP comes in. So if they add something to it next meeting, then that would be included.
And just to clarify, it's, it's not tox, it's not just toxic pesticides. We specifically prohibited round up our glyphosate containing products. There are plenty of other toxic things that we, right, right, right. So we're good, we're good on that, the second, and your second is amended. And to, but to Mr. Mortel's point regarding the bike storage, could the rack, could we have racks in the stairwells perhaps, so that at least they're covered, or in some of the stairwells?
Boy, I hate to commit to putting them in the building. I mean, maybe we can look at covering the bike racks that are out, outside. I know the back building, you know, there's not a lot of space in that back building for something like this. I'm not sure. And I know stairwells typically don't have a lot of space either for bike racks.
And these are higher-end apartments?
I'm sorry?
Are these higher-end apartments? Are they apartments or condo?
They're apartments, rental.
They're higher-end apartments?
Yes, yes, they are.
I, I don't think I'd want to leave my bike outside anyways. I mean, but.
Most, most people bring them.
I was just curious, because of the fact they're higher-end apartments. There was a storage area for the bikes that was like a bike garage, so to say. But that's not something that's.
Most people with nice bikes.
I carry mine into my apartment.
Yeah, most people bring them into their own apartment.
If I lived in an apartment, mine would be inside where I felt safe.
Yeah, bikes, yeah, these days are very expensive.
Are there any other?
Call the question.
Is there any public comment on this motion? Yes, there is. There was a green card submitted, and then if there's anybody else who'd like to make public comment, please submit a green card, or if you're online, please raise your hand or dial star nine. Yes, sir, Mr. Don Barber, thank you for the reminder.
Well, you're very welcome, and I'm one of those folks who's waited about three and a half hours for this. Your Honors, Senate Commissioners, thank you for the opportunity to address you this evening. For the record, I am Don Barber. I am a resident and shareholder of the Riverland Cooperative at 3,500 Soft Canter Highway, which is located next door to the planned Bridgeview Development. I am also a member of Riverland's Bridgeview Committee, a temporary committee established by the Riverland Board of Directors to advise the board and take action on behalf of the board in regard to the Bridgeview, Bridgeview Development. My remarks here today are in that capacity. Appearing for you today is also represents the last act of the temporary committee, and I'm looking, looking forward to moving on to other goals. On June 18th, the Riverland Atlantic Organizations were able to reach an agreement addressing the concerns of the Riverland community. At this time, Riverland has no objections to the approval process for the Bridgeview project continuing forward. However, the agreement reached with Atlantic is a negotiated compromise representing a balance between the needs of Riverland and the property rights of Atlantic. Like all compromises, it is one where everyone can find something to like or dislike. All Riverland residents have been encouraged to take advantage of the public comment opportunity available at this hearing, should they wish to express a more personal opinion. Should any do so, I would like to thank you in advance on behalf of the Riverland community for allowing time for county residents to speak their mind at a city hearing. This concludes my remarks. I'm available to answer any questions either now or later during the hearing. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Barber.
Is there any other public comment on this motion, any online?
General question. Well, I was going to say Mr. Gent, but it's not. There's no connection, I mean, there is a connection, but Riverland people won't be able to go across to go on the river, on that little boardwalk.
It's private.
Yeah, I know. It's just for, just for your guys.
Yeah, there is, there is no pedestrian connections directly to River, Riverland.
Okay, that's fine.
Okay, Ms. Kendall, will you call the roll, please?
Vice Mayor.
Oh. Okay.
Hi there, can you hear me?
Hello, yes, you are recognized. Would you say your name for the record, please?
My name is Linda K. Richards. I spoke earlier tonight in public comment, and I just wanted to say I had to leave, and I've been watching the meeting on Zoom. And I just want to reiterate my comments on the fact that this development that has come in on recently annexed land with a large amount of units of rental apartments does not fit with what our city, our quaint seaside city should be. And I'm asking, I am, I am pleading with our city council to look at the growth and how much apartment buildings that we are putting up around the outskirts of Stewart, and what it will do to our city and to our county. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other raised hands online? Ms. Kendall, will you call the roll, please?
Vice Mayor Clark.
Yes.
Commissioner Brunner.
Yes.
Commissioner McDonald.
Yes.
Commissioner Matheson.
Yes.
Mayor Meyer.
Yes, motion carries unanimously. Thank you all very much. Now go get it done, please. Item number 17, Low and Palm Residential. This is a quasi judicial item. Mr. Mortel?
This is ordinance number 2439-2020. An ordinance of the City Commission of the City of Stewart, Florida, amending the city of Stewart's comprehensive plan via a small-scale comprehensive map amendment from residential low to east Stewart, rezoning from residential single-family R1 to single-family and duplex sub-district SFD on the city's official zoning map, and approving a major urban code conditional use for the property totaling .72 acres, owned by Low and Palm Property Investments LLC, located between Martin Luther King Jr. Boulevard and southeast, southeast Sixth Street, west of Palm Beach Road, being more fully described in Exhibit A attached, to allow the development of two duplex lots and three single-family lots, declaring the project to be consistent with the city's comprehensive plan, providing directions to the city clerk, providing for repeal of all ordinances in conflict, providing for severability, providing for an effective date, providing for acceptance by the applicant, and for other purposes.
Thank you, Mr. Mortel. Did the commissioners have any ex parte communication? Ms. Commissioner Brunner?
Nope, I'm here with an open mind.
Commissioner Matheson?
I believe I've spoken with the applicant since last reading, and I'm here with an open mind.
Commissioner McDonald?
I've spoken with Mr. Quazo and Mr. Hartman and staff, and I'm here with an open mind.
I've spoken with the applicant, and I've probably spoken with staff. I'm here with an open mind. I've also spoken to residents in the east Stewart area. I'm here with an open mind.
I've spoken with the applicants, and staff and I am here with an open mind. Mr. Mortel, would you swear in all those giving testimony?
Let the record reflect that there are five people being sworn. Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth, so be God? Let the record reflect all testified affirmatively.
Thank you. Mr. Mortel, Mr. Mayor?
Thank you, Stephen Mayor for the record, Development Department. This is a second reading of ordinance number 2439-2020, which in your agenda packet is a, a land use amendment from residential low to east Stewart, rezoning from residential single-family to east Stewart, single-family and duplex or SFD on our zoning map, and also an approval of a major urban conditional use. The applicant, I do not have any updates from the staff level up, but I do know, and I'm aware that the applicant would like to request some modifications to, from, for this ordinance. And so I'd like to turn, I would like to stop the staff presentation and wait the applicant's request, and then we can possibly have a recommendation after they have made their request.
Thank you.
It's unusual second reading, but.
Mr. Quazo?
Good evening. My name is Don Quazo here, representing the applicant. The applicant has listened to the community and has decided that he does not want to do the duplex lots, so his request is for six single-family lots of this piece of property. Everything else remains the same. We want the zoning change and the land use change. I'd be glad to answer any questions if you have any.
So you'll be coming back another time?
I hope not.
Can we just, we just have to include it now?
I hope that we can just do that tonight in amended ordinance.
So we're changing it to seven living places to six?
I would like seven, but they want six.
If the commission were to adopt the order as, as set, they would have to come back and come, be in compliance with the east Stewart overlay zone, and it would be restricted to six lots. So whatever, everything else would be straight zoning.
Right.
And then staff? Right. And then staff would be able to review the site plan, staff level ensures.
Right, as long as it met the zoning, it'd be approved.
Okay. Second. Thank you for moving.
I have a motion for approval by Commissioner McDonald and a second by Vice Mayor Clark.
And we should put on the record that you want it limited to six lots because the East Stewart overlay zone doesn't have a minimum lot size, so that's the only restriction. You guys are implementing it now.
Yeah, I'll include that, the six lots, six, six single-family lots.
Agree.
So the motion has been updated and the second amended as well.
Thank you, Mr. Hartman. Thank you for listening to the community. Both of you, both of Mr. Hartman.
Mr. They're going back to their original platted 50-foot-wide lots.
Yes.
They just wanted to get tortured to get there.
Full circle.
Thank you, Mr. Hartman. So we have a motion and a second. Is there any public comment on this now that it has been revised? Would staff, would staff like to?
Sure, just I put up the zoning regulations for a single-family district, and the important thing, as, as City Attorney had mentioned, is that the lot with, would be that there'd be no minimum lot with, so we would have to ensure that six units would be what we're approving tonight.
Okay.
Yes.
And setbacks, and setbacks don't.
And the setbacks would be 15-foot in the front, five side, and 20 rear, as would be all single-family district, duplex.
And they can fit it in there, you think, Stephen?
Would they be able to fit a single-family? Yes.
Yes.
Their site plan had seven units. They're driving it down to six.
Right.
Should be no problem.
Okay.
Somebody better call Mr. Duffy and tell him.
Yes, Mr. Duffy.
Is there any public comment here in this room or online for this motion? Seeing none, seeing none here. Well, call the roll then. Ms. Kendall?
Commissioner Brunner?
Commissioner Brunner?
Yes.
Commissioner Matheson?
Yes.
Commissioner McDonald?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Clark?
Yes.
Mayor Meyer?
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Hartman.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thanks for sticking it out tonight.
Yes, I love that. See, that's where we need to switch it to the front. I like that idea, you know, switching it to the front.
Next.
Okay, well.
One more. Let's go.
Moving on to item number 18, Sailfish Cove UPUD. This is a quasi-judicial second reading. Ms. Brunner, Commissioner Brunner, any ex parte communication?
No, and I'm here with an open mind.
Commissioner Matheson?
I have none, and I'm here with an open mind.
Oh, yes, yes, yes.
This is ordinance number 2449-2020, an ordinance of the City Commission of the City of Stewart, Florida, approving a rezoning from urban waterfront to urban planned unit development for a .925 acre property located at 37 and 41 Southwest Seminole Street. Said land being more fully described in Exhibit A attached, establishing the Sailfish Cove UPUD consisting of 30 multifamily residential units and 5,768 square feet of office or commercial use in accordance with Section 2.07.00 of the Stewart Land Development Code, allowing a density of 26.75 dwelling units per acre on a .95 acre site, approving a final site plan, providing for development conditions, including a timetable for development, declaring the plan to be consistent with the city's comprehensive plan, providing directions to the city clerk, providing for repeal of all ordinances in conflict, providing for severability, providing for an effective date, and for other purposes.
Thank you, Mr. Mortel. Resuming, Mr. Commissioner Matheson, ex parte?
I have none, and I'm here with an open mind.
Commissioner McDonald?
I've spoken with Marcella Campbell and staff, and I'm here with an open mind.
Vice Mayor?
I said hello to Marcella Campbell today. Nothing since the last meeting. I'm here with an open mind.
I have none since last reading, and I am here with an open mind as well. Mr. Reitz? Oh, can we swear in anybody?
If there's going to be testimony or new evidence, yes.
Have I spoken to Mr. Quazo too?
Let the record reflect, please raise your right hand if there are any sworn. Let the record reflect, there's one, two, three, four, five people being sworn. Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so be God? Let the record reflect all testified affirmatively.
Thank you, Mr. Mortel. Yes, thank you. Now, Mr. Reitz?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Tom Reitz, Development Department. This is second reading. It's Sailfish Cove, and it's changing from urban waterfront to UPUD. I'll do the brief overview, and then the applicant is here to answer any questions. The site is .925 acres. We are rezoning to UPUD. There are two conditions that, actually, one condition that changed and a new condition. Condition number 16 increased if the CRA's Seminole Streetscape plans occurs first prior to Sailfish, the Sailfish Cove development project. By the way, Sailfish thinks they're going to come in sooner than our Streetscape plan. The, the price has actually gone up from $47,559 to $74,047, and that is mainly for bollards. The, the Seminole Streetscape plan now includes bollards instead of curbing, and also there's some warning strips that are included in that price. So basically, there's about $27,000 difference. So that's, that's the reason for the increase. Also, the new condition prior to a CO, development will provide a minimum of three Level 2 electric vehicle charging stations and support the immediate vehicle charging that will support the immediate vehicle charging, and also three infrastructure charging stations to support future electric vehicle charging. And with that, this is a list of, from the engineer of the cost of the additional Seminole Streetscape improvements. This is a picture looking east. You can see the boathouse in the upper left, and the bollards that will actually occur about halfway down the street, and then curbing will pick up for the remainder of the street.
Mr. Reitz, are the bollards lighted?
Not that I'm aware of.
Okay. And so this is, I mean, this is the overall Streetscape plan for, per CRA for the Seminole redo. So the applicant is proposing to pay into, because the ball, the overall construction, this isn't the applicant's own design for bollards.
Right.
The applicant did, yeah, the applicant did coordinate with the CRA in, in the final design, and in a lot of respects, the, the final design was amended to some of the applicant's suggestions. So there is a, if, if, if the applicant comes in first, they will construct part of this Streetscape. It's quite an interesting Streetscape. It's curbless, and the pavers are pervious, and it affords a great deal of stormwater treatment within the street.
I, I just, given, that's great. I love it. But just given that we're going to bollards, I just wonder, I'm sure there will be extra cost for them to be lighted, but since there's no overhead, is there any overhead lighting planned for the Streetscape improvement?
There is, there is street lighting.
Okay.
Yes.
All right, well, I'll hush up then.
I'll move for approval. Second.
Okay, with incorporating the.
Yes, yes.
Okay, I have a motion for approval by Commissioner Brunner and a second by Vice Mayor Clark. Any further discussion or questions?
As long as Mary understands it.
Campbell wants to say something.
Yes, please. Sorry, we're just steamrolling you. Ms. Campbell, thank you.
Good evening. Thank you, Marcella Campbell. Planner for the record for this project. Just a little bit of clarification on the $74,000. When we first went to the CRB, the estimate was $39,000 and change. Between CRB and the first hearing, the, this curbless section came about, and we discussed it with staff and CRA. I think that was, that had been the original vision of the CRA, and, and a new estimate was done for $47,000, and that's what you saw last time. And today, when I saw it at 74, I thought it was a typo. But it is 74, and, and we understand that, you know, there's additional cost, and, and the, you know, the applicant is willing to pay for it. Now, the questions raised are, as you see, this section is going to have bollards and more than just this project. However, this appears to be the only project that on top of donating or giving the city the land, is being charged for the bollards, is being charged for additional streetlight, is being charged for the landscaping. Again, George has said he would be willing to do it, but we have a problem, though, in that we have to put a timeline by when, you know, the $74,000 kind of goes away. We, we ideally would be ready to start construction documents, come back to the city very quickly. The, the applicants want to be able to put a shovel in the ground before the end of the year, if that is possible. And right now, it's my understanding that the CRA doesn't have completed plans, doesn't have the grant money to, to do this street. We have to know how long we have to wait to see what the city is doing before we can pull the trigger and finish, otherwise build it ourselves. It's a complicated construction, and Joe can speak to it too, because it's not like we're just going to do on-street parking or paint stripes on the road. Because the street is going to be curbless, we're going to have to, to do a different design. And so our proposal was if the city doesn't have a grant secured by, in the next 12 months, we are just going to move forward with a design as presented in the plans. And then if you guys want to change it, then that's the city's cost. The problem is, we, how long are we going to have to, you know, have this uncertainty? The, the kind of project that we are proposing, we believe benefits greatly from having the on-street parking there from day one. So, I mean, it's going to take us 18 months probably to build the building. We would like to know in 12, are we building the on-street parking, or are we giving you the money, and when are you doing it?
Thank you, Ms. Campbell. Well, I just, I could be wrong, but, and maybe, maybe Mr. Dias can help clarify. I wish Penal were here. Didn't we approve in the CRA, CIP?
To apply for the CDVD grant next year.
But I thought we had, I thought we had set aside.
We are. We do have a sinking fund as well. I'm not sure how much of that.
Yeah, I can't say when that is, if that would cover the whole thing. I think it's planned to start.
I know, undergrounding, I think we.
Yeah, I think there's an undergrounding element. I can see, I can understand the difficulty in holding this for perpetuity in effect.
Would we lose the grant?
Before we caught up in the timeframe of it, we should talk about what happened. So the, the, the development order right now has scenarios. That is, if the city builds first, it's got a scenario. But what Marcella is referring to is if the developer builds first. Well, let's fast forward and say the developer's going to build first. It looks like it. So if the developer builds first, the developer is not going to CO without curb cuts in a driveway under their property and a sidewalk and parking out front, because those parking are conditions of development. So they're going to have an option at the time that they go to develop to build this curbless street design. If the city never builds the curbless street design and never builds the bollards, but the developer builds the curbless street design in front of the development, it kind of loses its, its, its purpose. So the question becomes, what's the remedy? Well, first of all, we could just say, developer, build yours and have our street look stupid until we fix it. Or we could also do this kind of hybrid where the developer has to build four parking spaces or whatever it is under the current design, and then the city in its application is going to upgrade that to the curbless or new design with the bollards that the street may or may not pursue in the grant, depending on whether it gets it or not. The hypothetical is what's holding us up. So the reality is, what we should do is approve the developer's project with the condition of this is what you need to build on your project. Let's not worry about what the city does. Let's, this is what you need to do regardless of what the city does. And I don't know what that is, but you guys could say, we want it to be curbless, and if the city never builds the rest of the street as curbless, we'll worry about that later. Or you could say, I want it to have a curb, and if the city goes curb, city does curbless, then we'll upgrade it when we do it.
The original, the original site plan that we reviewed on first reading, it did contemplate curbless. It was just, this was before bollards.
So the one we took to the CRB had the curb.
Right.
The one that we brought here was curbless.
Right.
Because we had coordinated with the CRA and the engineers.
Right. And the full extra cost didn't come through at that point?
No. But, and, and again, it's not just that. I mean, we, we, the applicant was not aware that the money is not there, and this needs, you know, there's not a real timeframe on that. And, and the problem of building this twice obviously would be an issue. We just, we're, you know, if it's not 12 months again, what is, we'd need to know at what point we move forward, and if we're going to build it, we're going to build it correctly. And not correctly, not that one way is right and the other one's not.
Understand the, your point, yes. Yeah, Commissioner.
Just to clarify, so you're looking for a hard deadline of 12 months of to, at that point, where you guys decide which design you're going to build?
We'll, we'll work with the city, yeah. And if by then you've secured the grant, and it makes more sense for us to just pause, give you the money, and, and wait for you to build it, we can do that.
I'm fine with that. You'll give me the ability to build either way and have a deadline, and at that 12 month, at that 12 months, then you'll obviously be consulting with city staff.
Of course, yeah.
And decide which, which route that you're going to go based on how the CRA is going. One thing I know is, is every project that you do, as much as you want to do it in 12 months or 18 months, this is government, and government, you know, if, if it's 18 months in the private sector, it's 36 months in government.
So I feel the same way as you, Commissioner McDonald, but I don't like an open, we're going to have to come back. If, if, there needs to be an approved site plan. If you guys are saying we're going to let them decide the site plan in the next 12 months, then we'll, we'll come back then, or they just get to change the site plan sometime, and if they like.
I think it would have to, at least at the very minimum, would probably need to come back to city staff, but I think that is the dilemma. Do you, do you guys have a preference on which site plan you prefer to have approved?
So being the difficult one in the team, I do prefer the curbless. However, it's very difficult to do just, you know.
One parcel curbless.
A curbless and not doing it across the street.
What if we approve?
Putting it all on the table, the city did a design and presented it to the city.
That's what I'm saying.
With curves. The applicant convinced the CRA to switch that to curbless.
Thanks, Marcella.
And now the applicant is saying, and by the way, we, we did, they're switching it to curbless, but it turns out it might cost more. So now, the approved commission board is a curbed one. That's what the commission has seen from the CRA so far, not the curbless from a CRA Streetscape perspective.
But we approve it with the curved, and then we can come back and change it.
And the curved also had, the approved section was resulting in, you know, we were.
The point for the curbless was to add.
Sidewalk.
Exactly.
Right. We're picking up significant real estate and sidewalk and, and really creating a better, safer, more sort of, yeah, less tripping hazard.
I'm just trying to solve the dilemma of what we have here, so.
I think, you know, we're all, we want to work together with the city. The only thing is we don't want to, we want to understand at some point, will you get the, I mean, if, if Joe has to figure out how we build curbless just for our 200 feet, we'll do it. The problem is if that doesn't happen.
Joe Shigman said no. He says he's not doing it.
I just want to make sure you understand.
Please just have your name there.
For the record, Joe Capra, okay? The curbless street that you're going to talk about there has different grade elevations. We have to worry about ADA slopes and everything. We have to worry about the drainage here. We have to recognize that if you don't do the whole street, there's parking on both sides now that are going to be kettiwampers. It's not going to work. So this is what we agreed to in our discussion with, if we did go curbless, okay, that we would have to wait. I mean, we'd have to wait. Basically, we would leave, we would not put those parking spaces in front of our property at first, okay? And then you'd come in and put everything in, because there's a drainage system underneath that pervious pavement, too. So everything has to be weighed on that. So what you'd have out there, if we're out there in front of you, okay, is you would, you would have the road that's out there today with no parking, the sidewalk the way it is there, and you would come up to our, come up to our, our building, okay? And then you'd come in later when you got your grant, and you would change all that. You would change it all later. Now, we don't have a problem with that, but we have a timing problem with that.
Now, we don't have a problem with that, but we have a timing problem with that because we need those four spaces, four spaces we need and that's part of the agreement. That's what Mike has a problem with. So, you know, I'm just telling you the different, the problems here with, that we're going to have. We can't finish it. Now, we can come back in and say, and say that 12 months later and we could put in parking spaces and we could put in our sidewalk, but somebody's going to come back later and change it and change it out.
Which is...
So, we just don't want to do it twice and we don't want you to do it twice, of course, either. So, all I'm telling you is, we can do it that way. It's just when we get, you may not have a curbless facility there, which, again, we came up with that idea for the safety reasons. I mean, believe me, I designed Osceola and all this area before with curbs and it's a tripping hazard out there for people and we thought this would be a good change from that and that's why we recommended the curbless.
And there's no way...
We get a letter a week about trips.
There's no way you can wait. The timing.
No, you're not going to wait.
The timing, I just wondered, you could wait.
Well, then, and then what they're proposing is that if we don't have an answer in 12 months, they don't owe the money.
Right.
So...
Yeah, just build with the spaces in the curb, right.
Which is, by the way, I can promise you what's going to end up happening.
We won't have the answer then.
Where, even if we have the answer, we are not going to be putting stormwater and stuff in next September. It won't get done. Commissioner McDonald's comment about it's going to take 18 to 36 months is real. That's probably more accurate.
I think we just, I think maybe the question is, is if we know the grants there and you're moving forward and 12 months comes, then, then, then we can wait, okay? We'll have to make accommodations for that within our own parking. But the fact of, if you don't have a grant and you guys are not sure what you're going to do for five years, this is a...
We'll know more in 12 months than we do now and I have a feeling the desire of the City of Stewart is the plan that's up there. But right now, we don't know as much as we will 12 months from now. Maybe in 12 months, we might have the grant. I agree, we're not going to have, we should be ready for construction, but...
We need an alternative certificate of occupancy...
Right, that's...
...to the applicant. Right? I mean, you, you need...
Because we can't start building a building, find out, we can't close it or CO it and we're sitting there waiting on you to...
What is, what is the alternative that we need to put into the order? Is it that they don't need to do the four parking spaces? We accept them?
They're going to want the four parking spaces. What they're going to do is build four $6,000 parking spaces that are boom, 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 boom. If we're going to do a curbed street and none of this fancy stuff is going to happen. And then, once they put the curbs in and the curb cuts in and do their thing, we're going to then get our grant and rip it all back out and redo it. That's, that's what Mr. Capra is commenting on.
That may have to be what happens.
Right.
I mean, I don't like the idea.
If we're all okay with that, then, then vote then.
We weren't going to do a curbless. If we have to come in before, we're not going to do a curbless.
Without the rest of the road.
Because we need the rest of the road.
That's what I mean. I think that it's going to end up, if, if 18 months from now or a year or 12 months from now and we haven't got this thing worked out, which I don't believe we will, you'll be beyond the point of no return as far as construction and you'll be just putting in curbs and building new spaces.
Just if I may, I mean, if in 12 months, this hasn't progressed and the application hasn't been submitted, I mean, if in 12 months...
You're in process.
Right, I mean, if in 12 months, you're in process and you tell us, hey, wait two more months because we're here, we can do that. But if, but if it comes to the point where our building is almost done, we're going to have to CO, we need to put the parking spaces, that doesn't mean that you can't come and rip it and do it. The thing is, the applicant is probably at that point, or maybe the HOA would be paying...
As a port of clarification, I may be wrong. One of the reasons for being adamant about this is because it's my understanding that we did not apply for this grant this year. Is that right, Kevin?
I'm not certain about that, Mike. No, yeah, we missed...
The deadline is gone. So, the intention is to apply for the very first time next spring. So, when we apply next April, next May or June...
Well, no.
If, by the way, we might get approved and it'll be on the agenda for the commission to budget it, design it and decide whether or not, based upon current prices, you actually want to do the project. So, it'll be before you, for the very first time, next July or August, deciding whether you're moving forward. If you're going to move forward, it would then go out to bid in November, maybe, and then plan on construction in '22 at the earliest? That's, that's, to me, if, that's if literally nothing goes wrong, perfect timing on everything.
Yes, yes. I was going to call you Commissioner.
But I just want to be clear that the reason I'm concerned is because we haven't applied for this grant.
Yes, Mr. Mortel, I agree with you. However, I think if we've got to wait, I would hate to see it, but if we've got to wait two years for the portion that, that is in front of this parcel is curbless while we, we're in process, we're getting the grant, we're bidding it out, if we've got to wait two years to finish it, I'd rather do that than rip it all out, even though it would look a little wonky, if that's possible.
If we know, I agree with you, that's a good, that's a good solution that you're proposing now.
I'm going to pull back my motion and Mr. McDonald, Commissioner McDonald or whoever can word it.
I had a motion by Commissioner Brunner and a second by Vice Mayor Clark.
So, you're...
Mr. Mayor, would you like me to try to craft the motion?
Please.
Okay, this is going to be creative. Okay, so, move for approval from first reading to second reading.
Take your time.
I'm just trying to think how we want to do this. In 12, with, I'm not really sure how to, how to, how to phrase this. So, what we need to do, just help me out here, Joe, we need to have a motion, in our motion, we need to have, in the motion, that, that in 12 months, we need to know, if, if the, how about if the city, in 12 months, you think, Mr. Dias, do you think we'll have an idea, know if we received the grant yet in 12 months?
12 months from today, I don't know that we will.
When do they award the grant?
I don't know that we will have the, have the results.
How about, you know, how, can I change the timeframe a little bit at the move for approval? And then, in stating that the city will apply for the grant in April.
Let's confirm that April is actually the timeline.
Or in the spring, how about the spring? That way, it's next year. Then, if we go 14 months, from 14 months from now, well, it puts us into November, that we will have, whether, then we will review, go back and review and decide if we have the grant and then at that point, if we have the grant, then we can, you may have to come back to the city commission, but again, this is...
They can't apply for a permit with this motion.
I know, it's, it's not, there's nothing that's working for me there.
They need a motion that gives them a temporary CO that says, look, you can do four on-street parking spaces with chalk until this thing gets built.
Okay. That's right, exactly right. Not the option for an alternative, for four parking spaces that we can, we'll get approval with your staff.
Okay, so...
But it may be just concrete spaces, it could be just base rock, could be anything. Something that we would use as a temporary to get the money.
Until you get a permit.
Yeah, so, I'll move for approval with, with the ability to do four temporary parking spaces until we get the grant funding and build the street.
Second.
Does that work for you, Mike?
That works for me, but now the applicant through Marcela asked for a deadline because they have to dedicate roughly $80,000 payment to the City of Stewart or something related to it, or is it going to require you guys to build it no matter when we do it?
Well, part of the deadline is necessary because once the unit starts selling and once that, now the ownership is an HOA and not the developer anymore, you know, who's responsible for giving you that money? So, if, you know, if it's going to, I understand the timing with city. I mean, we believe that we can build the building in 18 months. We still have to do construction documents. If, if adding to December of next year to have...
December 31st of 2021.
That's fine and if by then, the city hasn't applied and we don't see progress, we will then turn the, turn those temporary ones into permanent ones and be done.
That's the problem. You're not getting approved for permanent ones right now. That's not the motion. So, you'll have to come back to convert those into a permanent, because there's no site plan for those right now. There's nothing being approved.
Okay, so, what's the process for us to come back and convert a permanent? Is it a PUD amendment?
Just a minor amendment?
No.
Can it just be an admin...
Administrative.
Administrative, if it's an administrative approval, I mean, it's four parking.
If it's administrative, then I'm...
Yeah.
Okay, so, that's my motion.
Second.
Does that legally hold water?
Yes.
It absolutely holds water, but to say that it's administrative when 10 seconds ago was so complicated that we had to have this discussion, seems to me like it's more complicated than administrative.
So, what we say...
In the face of itself, like if it, we can't even do anything because if you don't do the on-street parking, it's not going to match up and where the cars park, where the trees are, where the landscaping is, it's so complicated.
That's before we found a solution. That was before we found a solution.
No, 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 now the, the last piece of it is administrative. The whole thing before was the complicated.
What if we don't do it and instead of this design that you just approved, their entire front of their building is going to be different? Right?
It's, if you look at it in plan, can you put the plan? It's not, I mean...
Well, I don't know, that's what I'm saying.
Yeah, so you have, Mr. Mortel, the intention, we've made it pretty clear so far and this board, well, I mean, who knows, it could change.
Sidewalk would be narrower.
So, we have the original layout for the sidewalk and parking. If the city does not obtain the grant at a date certain, then the applicant has the option to build in accordance with that originally designed street prior to the city.
That works, the originally designed street.
Because we have a site plan.
Okay.
Yes.
So, okay, so let me rephrase this motion. So, move for approval, allowing the applicant to do four temporary parking spaces. If the city does not obtain the grant and is moving forward no later than December 31st of 2021, then with administrative approval, they can go back to the original curbed site plan and build that.
Perfect.
Oh.
That's great.
That was, that was a little bit more work than I expected.
Only you, Marcela, only you we can do it for.
If not, go back to the original.
And Joe. You and Joe. Second, thank you.
Good, well done, Commissioner McDonald. I just want to be clear.
She's a doll.
Let's say we, let's say we, let's say we apply, I'm reading the CDVG timeframe right now. Let's say we apply in March 2021, which is the application cycle. It says that, you know, and that's open March, April, May, June. Let's say we get good marks, but we don't quite make the grant, they say, you know, and we want to try again the following year. Your motion says if we don't have the grant by the end of the year.
Right.
Okay.
Because...
We're not going to try again. All right. Okay, we have a motion and a second. Ms. Kendall, are you clear on all of that?
Would you like me to read back what I have? Or should we just go for it?
Just go for it.
Okay, I'll, I'll have it on recording tomorrow.
Okay.
Okay, Vice Mayor Clark?
Yes.
Oh, sorry, before you call the roll, I need to see if there's any public comment. Any public comment here in the room, any online? Raise your hand, star nine. Seeing none, please, Ms. Kendall.
Vice Mayor Clark?
Yes.
Commissioner Brunner?
Yes.
Commissioner McDonald?
Yes.
Commissioner Matheson?
Yes.
Mayor Meyer?
Yes, motion carries unanimously. It's 9:59, do I have a motion to continue the date certain of...
Continue?
Second.
I have a serious, oh, that's the thing, always the end, I've got a serious...
Gotcha. We have a motion to continue, item number 19, to date certain of 9:28. In a second, you have the motion, the motion maker and the seconder?
Yes.
Ms. Kendall?
It's not...
The motion was by Commissioner McDonald and second by Vice Mayor Clark.
Thank you.
All in favor.
Any public comment?
Yep.
Seeing none? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Opposed? Ms. McBride?
Which row?
This is the last thing of the meeting?
Would you like to make your comment publicly before we adjourn?
Very serious, like, I think.
Yeah.
Yes, Helen McBride on Flamingo Avenue. I was walking Ms. Charlotte out, I love her, she parked her car way over behind the annex and we walked down, because you noticed she had the cane, she's 89, and we walked down the handicap. You got two headlights that are shining in your eye, but there's no lights on the handicap ramp. And then, you know, there's no, I mean, those two parking lights are dark. Now, I know, I was in the first city hall, I'm in the second and I know I'm hoping I'll be in the third, but maybe a sensor light on the building here in the corner so that